Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Casa Grande's City Council Meeting tonight. And first order of business on our agenda tonight is the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have Pastor Tim Hill from the Crossroads Church here to lead us in our invocation. And then please remain standing, and we'll do the pledge after that. Pastor?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for doing this. Let's pray.
Thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for your son, and we've been celebrating his return. We thank you for the resurrection. Lord, I thank you tonight for a city such as ours. I thank you for a mayor and for a city council who call you Lord and recognize the importance of prayer before making important decisions. God, we've been through a storm here as a city, as a nation. We never saw anything like this coming. We have a long ways to go. Give our leaders wisdom, discernment, and supernatural ability to lead the city in a great and prosperous direction. We pray health and safety upon our residents. We pray, we pray, health and safety upon our leaders. Tonight, we think about Detective Troy Schmitz. We ask for a supernatural intervention for his health. We thank you, Lord, for being his chief physician, and we trust you, God, for his miraculous recovery. Now, Lord, thank you. I pray other cities look at ours and wonder, what is so special about Casa Grande? And they'll soon discover this city is led by people, ordinary men and women, who call Jesus Christ Lord and ask for his help in making decisions. Bless us tonight, God. Bless this city in the name above all names, Jesus our risen Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. God bless you guys.
Thank you, Pastor. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. Gloria, let the roll call show that all council members are present. Need approval of the past minutes?
Mayor, I would move approval of the City Council regular meeting minutes from March 15th, 2021, and accept for the record the Health Care Benefits Trust Board of Trustees minutes from October 16th, and the Casa Grande Parks and Recreation Advisory Board minutes from February 18th. And accept the last two for the record, and accept a city council.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the minutes have been approved. Next item is Item D, Claims Against the City.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated March 10th, March 30th, 2021, as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain, Mayor.
Okay. Lisa will abstain. Item E is a meeting agenda approval. Does staff have any changes, Larry, at this time?
Yes.
Any changes from council? Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We do have a special presentation tonight. We have Officer Bloom with us tonight, and if we could ask him to come on in.
Her.
Her? I'm sorry. That was a football.
Mayor, council, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to introduce our newest police officer, Emily Bloom. She comes to us from Norton Shores, Michigan, where she was a police officer for four years, and she's been with us since January. She challenged the AZ Post certification test and passed, so she's now in field training, and we're very happy to have her with us.
Welcome. Welcome, Emily. Congratulations, too.
Thank you.
Gloria ran off to get it. So did you move to Casa Grande?
Yes.
Great. Well, welcome. Well, we really appreciate when you live in Casa Grande, too. That's great.
Did you have a lot of snow in Michigan when you left?
Yes. When I left, yeah, there's a good amount. I had to shovel the driveway to get the moving truck out.
I was in upstate New York for three years, and as I was coming back through that area, I finally drove out at about Erie, Erie, Pennsylvania. It was just driving right on the snow.
You didn't bring your snow shovel, did you? One thing you're not gonna need.
I think I brought one. It just says.
Just in case.
It's good for spreading rocks.
Yeah.
If you go to Flagstaff, you can use it when you go to Flagstaff.
Or spreading rocks. So how many new, more new officers are we gonna have?
Well, we have one in the academy, and that's it for right now.
And we have applications open?
Yes, they are currently open.
Okay.
Couple of processes coming in.
Excellent. All right, Gloria?
Sorry about that. Raise your right hand and state after me. I.
I, Emily Bloom.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the State of Arizona.
And the laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear to faith and allegiance to the same. I will bear to faith.
I will bear to faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations again. Welcome. All right, the next item on our agenda is our consent agenda items. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anyone have anything you want to remove from the audience and/or council?
Mayor McFarland, I'd like to remove G4, please.
Me, too.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone else?
I have moved approval except for the one that's been withdrawn.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve all the consent agenda items except for G4. We'll consider that next. All those in favor signify. Oh, I need to do a roll call vote, sorry. Gloria, would you please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tim Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, then the next item on our agenda is G4. And would one of you like to present?
Mayor McFarland, I would, I pulled this off the agenda because I know that there have been some discussions in the last few days about the grant and what goes with that, specifically on the drones. And I thought that it would benefit us and the public if we were able to have just a brief explanation of why the drones, that we feel those are necessary, so that the public can support the drones and the everything that goes, everything that goes with them, so.
Okay. Okay. Matt, your same reason rationale?
Yeah, basically.
Okay. All right, then that being said, then since Chief's here, do you like to introduce this? Or Larry, do you want to introduce it? Set it up, Chief? Okay.
Mayor and council, as you know, this is part of a GOHS Prop 207 grant that included not only a vehicle and phlebotomy money for a phlebotomist for the DUIs, but it also included the purchase of two drones, and the total grant was for $131,199.15. As far as the drones go, we, I'll give you a little back history that was on the paper, but I think it's worth repeating. We use these drones for traffic accident reconstruction, crime scenes, and things like that, but every time we needed one, we always have to wait for an outside jurisdiction to bring them to us, which is not very efficient. It doesn't add anything to our professionalism, and we are sometimes required to stay on scene a little bit longer than, or a lot longer than we would like. So the GOHS director called me and said they had some money set aside for Casa Grande, and that he asked if, he knew we wanted a vehicle and the phlebotomy stuff, but he also asked if we ever considered drones. And I said, yes, we did. We could use one. But they seemed, we didn't have the money for them. Cost prohibitive. So he said that he had money for us if we would submit the application for the drones. So Lieutenant Ramirez and Sergeant Ingstrom worked up the grant submittal and asked for and received two drones, software for those, training. Some of the training, we did find out after talking to Mr. Martinez, who's a local expert on drones and drone instructions, instructing that we didn't allocate enough money from the, from the grant, so we're, if this passes, we're planning on using some RICO funds to get the pilot license for our six officers. As far as the use of the drones, they're pretty grant-specific. As for, it's mostly for traffic enforcement and traffic-related instances. However, they did, we did ask, and we can use them in certain situations for senior walkaways, silver alerts, missing children, things along that line. We can use them for some surveillance. I'll give you a perfect example of seeing one in action. We got to witness one this week when our detective was, was drugged by the car, and we know, we located where the suspect lived, and instead of setting officers there on scene, DPS put up their drone. They were able to watch the garage. When the garage door went up, they positively identified this suspect from a distance away before he could get out of the car and cause a pursuit or a barricaded subject. The arrest team was on them, and it was safer for the suspect. It was safer for the community. It was safer for our officers. So we can use them in situations like that. And I understand some of the questions Mr. Raines said that was asked was, was some concern about privacy, I guess, and I think Brian showed me a deal today and said, you know, the, we can't use these drones anywhere we can't walk, but we can use them anywhere we can legally walk up to. They're not going to be used for general surveillance. They only have a 30-minute flight window. It's not like we can throw them up and keep them up for, you know, 30 minutes, bring them back down, throw them back up. We're not, that's not our plan. Our plan is to use them for the traffic reconstruction purposes, crime scene reconstruction photos. We do have some problems that are very, I don't think they're isolated to communities like Casa Grande, but the drag racers, we get, we get complaints on all the time. When we show up, they stop and run, so we have the option of either letting them run, and they'll do it the next weekend, or we chase them. Neither option's very good for us. We do know that a drone in a situation like this could be put up, gather evidence, pulled back over safely, and, and try to go make contacts at a later time when somebody's out of their vehicle. And like I told Larry, and I also put it in this memo, Lieutenant Ramirez and his crew have put a lot of thought into this. We have a policy that we are currently drafting among command staff. We're adding it and tweaking it a little bit to our, to our needs. We got that from Eric Edwards, who I think you all know that we pay his company for our legal advice, and they sent us a policy that we feel very comfortable with that limits the use of. It limits the, or it tells you when you can use it, restricts when you can't use it, and talks about the, the rules and the FAA, and things like that that we must follow. And it also specifically talks about privacy in there and how that's to be maintained. So we feel pretty comfortable going forward with this, that not only will it help us to become more efficient, to become a little more professional, a little more self-sufficient, if you will, is what our goal is anytime we do anything. And I think we're, we have the steps set to where we've given a lot of thought. We will have a good policy in place by the time it does get here. We have also talked to Mr. Martinez. Brian set up a meeting with Mr. Martinez. He wants to say something about the training of the pilots.
Yeah, it's essentially a 40-hour class with eight hours of flight time instruction. That prepares the officers to take the initial test, and we're hopeful that they will pass the test the first time around. According to Mr. Martinez, the FFA, or the FAA, just kind of took a normal pilot's test, and I want to say dumbed it down, but made it more specific to drones, but it is a very difficult test from what we're told.
If I can pass it, they can pass it.
And we are also, he has made the recommendation, he has put together a manual that he set up Maricopa PD with, and we're gonna talk to him about setting up the manual, the user's manual, and a guide for us and make it our own. He suggested that anybody that is interested in becoming a pilot should be tested first as part of our interview process, and tested on the manual. That way, they're already familiar with the requirements and how to use it and when you can't use it. And we're looking to incorporate that into our selection process. So to be repetitive, I do think we put a lot of thought in this. We feel very comfortable moving forward. We feel very comfortable in the policy we're gonna end up with, and based on the way we are selecting people and some of the people that we know right now that have an interest in it, we think we're gonna have some good qualified people to pilot this. And it's gonna not only help us, it's gonna help the investigations and help citizens as a whole.
And Chief, these can be used also to help us with the CG Mountain and kind of implementing our program to keep the motorized vehicles off the park or out of the park.
Yeah, the same way, yes, can, Mayor.
Go ahead, Lisa, or Donna, I'm sorry.
And you know, Chief, I just want to make sure that you know that I'm 100% behind this, but I think it's really important that if people are unnecessarily worried about what we're gonna be doing with them, that they understand that there's policies and procedures in place, and there's things we can and cannot do. So it's not a matter of privacy, and that's why I pulled it off. So, thank you.
And FAA is really specific, too, on privacy. It's very, it's a big part of the test, actually. So. Mr. Powell?
I was just gonna say, if you had a SWAT team surrounding a property, and, and you really don't know where people are located or whatever, wouldn't that really save a lot of grief?
Yes.
To have that available to go over and survey it and, and give information back to what's going on?
Absolutely, Mr. Powell. And also, and we did ask specifically if we could use it in instances outside the grant that were related to citizen safety or officer safety. And we kind of, we got the nod on that, so it could be.
Very good.
Matt?
Yeah, I want to thank you, because the biggest issue, I think, was the policy. And just to let people know that we do have a policy, or there will be a policy when we get to drones. And then with the Dodge Charger car, I saw in there that that's just a one-time, we're not gonna put that into the replacement program.
Correct. That's just, it's gonna be, and how, how we say it, it's gonna be out of door fleet for maintenance only.
Yeah, and once it runs its term of life, we'll auction it.
Do we have any idea what that's gonna be on that one? Is that specifically for high, the high-speed enforcement, right, or aggressive driving, rather?
Aggressive driving, yeah.
So it should have a pretty decent lifespan on it?
Yes.
So along with that, the drones, are they gonna be put into the replacement program then at this point? Or what's the lifespan on those?
You know.
Because it's a, I mean, I'm kind of concerned. The one's a $30,000 drone, so. Larry's nod in his head. Larry's.
Well, it's not gonna, we're not gonna come by and ask for a budget. I did tell Larry that we are going to evaluate the use of these and see if it is providing us the benefit that we want. And if it does, then we'll either have to go back to GOHS when these, when the life of these drones go down, or we're gonna have to come in front of y'all and try to sell you on the worth of it. But right now, our plan, and I'm, that's just being honest, but right now, our plan is not to, to be using that for city money.
Okay. Do we have any idea of the lifespan?
What did he tell us?
I don't have an idea of the lifespan. I think a lot of it's gonna be on how much we're flying it and how well the pilots can pilot.
Yeah.
Really, we could, we could get it up one time.
Kind of get shot with the.
Yeah.
There's not a lot to go wrong on. I mean, they're just small electric engines. The batteries really are the things that will wear out, and you can replace the batteries, so.
And then I saw the software. Is that the license for the whole time? Are we gonna need to put that into, to renew the licensing every year?
No, that's gonna cover it.
That'll cover all of it? And, and then I guess the data will be stored the same as our other data that we have, subject to the?
It'll probably, if we're, for using this, if I'm understanding you right, it will be entered into evidence.
Okay, so.
It'll be evidence. That's what we'll be using.
And we have the capacity?
We're not using it for, yes, we do. We're not using it for just general surveillance.
Yeah, it's just gonna be specific.
It's gonna be operationally specific, and if it's operationally specific, then that's gonna become part of the evidence.
So we're not talking about thousands and thousands of hours of storage? Okay. That helps me. Thank you very much. Good job on the grant.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I was really excited when I, when I saw this. I, I know in the past, the department has had to wait on a helicopter and sometimes a fixed-wing aircraft to do something fairly simple, and, and quite often, it resulted in actually poor quality photos or, or video. In real estate, we, we use the, the drones to feature a house, and we fly 360 around it, get great pictures in great detail. And I, I can see this being used ultimately to a jury that has a firsthand look at, at the crime scene or the accident scene. I, I think it's great you guys are pursuing this technology, and I look forward to it being used.
Anyone else? Mr. Powell?
I'd just say one more thing. I know sometimes you'll get a report of, of people or a party or something going on illegally at a location you can't drive to. And, and so that's when something like that really is helpful, where you can get it up in the air and actually see where it is and, and what they're doing, and I, I'm excited we have it. I think we've started into the new age here.
Matt?
Yeah, Councilmember Huster reminded me, every year, the police department used to put a helicopter in the budget. So this is a lot better. Budget-friendly.
Baby steps.
Yep. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, council.
All right, I'll entertain an ordinance number, please, Gloria?
Ordinance number 3254. An ordinance of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing and ratifying a grant agreement with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, authorizing the city manager to accept grant funds from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety in an amount up to $131,199.15 for the GOHS Prop 207 Fund Grant Proposal to be used by the City of Casa Grande, authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, authorizing the city finance director to accept and disperse funds as necessary, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3254, as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and segmented. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yeah, excuse me, yes.
Mayor Pro-Tim Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, then I'll move to Award of Contracts I-1, Considerance Number 3257. A proposal from Ellison Mills. Gloria?
Yes.
Is this yours?
Yes, it is. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff would recommend that the mayor and council authorize the city manager, authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Ellison Mills Contracting LLC for the guaranteed maximum price of $280,725.44 for the construction manager at risk relating to the Gilabon Highway Underpass Mosaic Art Project. And Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I would like to take the opportunity, first of all, to thank the many people and organizations that participated in this project. It has been a collaborative effort, the City of Casa Grande with the city manager's office, Public Works Department, specifically Duane Itel, who has been a tremendous help in putting this together, and the City Clerk's Department, the Casa Grande Arts and Humanities Commission, the CG Mosaic Creative Communities Team. In fact, this project started with the CG Mosaic Creative Team, which included Regis Summers, who's present here with us today, Erica Herman, Stacy Seaman, and then myself. Also, we had the Casa Grande Main Street. We had Black Fox Foundation and Arizona Art Mobile, which Lisa Swanson was a member of the team and was also hired as our consultant for this project, who designed the project for us. Just a recap of the project, here's what it looks like today. Not a, not a very pleasant view for, for our, our visitors coming in, prospective businesses that are coming in into the community, coming in from the west. It does serve as a major entrance into the community. Going out from the east, it provides a major entrance going outside of the community in and into our industrial areas. Why make the improvements? Well, first of all, it is part of your strategic plan to improve areas which are covered with blight, and unfortunately, this area has not had a lot of attention in years. It is covered right now with graffiti, broken light poles.
Different paint jobs.
Pardon me?
Different paint jobs.
Different paint jobs. And different paint jobs. And again, it is a major entrance into the community, and part of your strategic plan says that you're gonna. part of your strategic plan says that you're gonna address graffiti, major commercial corridors, you're going to try to improve signage into the community. It's also addressed in the city's general plan. In the general plan, it talks about, again, trying to improve major entrances into the community and trying to remove slum and blighted conditions in the downtown area. As an art project and relating to COVID-19, people ask, how does it relate to COVID-19 and how is it related to art? Recovering and healing from COVID-19 experience will require the community to seek inspirational opportunities. The ability to move forward with a beautification project will provide the much-needed inspiration and community unity. For the past several months, the community has experienced dark days, and many local citizens have been affected by COVID-19. Some community members have lost loved ones, lost jobs, and others have struggled with having to stay inside their homes to protect themselves. As the healing process begins, the community has an opportunity to turn to art for inspiration. Building community bonding and smoothing our souls by learning to cope with a pandemic crisis can start with the use of art. As an economic benefit, beautifying a major entrance into the city's industrial area will definitely benefit the community. What improvements shall be made? And I'd like to state that if you have any questions specifically to the design, Lisa Swanson is here and can address these questions. The development took some time because the committee decided that we needed community input. We went to children, we went to our adult community centers, we went to our students. Erica Herman is here with us today, and she specifically spoke to students of our elementary school to get their input about what they thought should be reflected in the design of this area. And then we concluded with a big community forum when we invited our community members, youth, seniors, anybody who wanted to attend our businesses. We had a number of businesses that came to this forum and offered their input. From all of this input, we were, through the leadership of Lisa Swanson, our consultant, our artist of our community, was able to pick together this design for the underpass. What was reflected a lot in the mural is what community members saw, how they saw our community in the past, today, and in the future. And here again, is just, again, looking back at what will be depleted for art and the painting in the Mosaic Underpass Project. Union Pacific is reflected also on here with their logo and their signage.
But... Forget to that. How much did they contribute, Gloria?
Nothing.
Unfortunately, both the mayor and I have taken the opportunity to try to contact them. I submitted an application when they were soliciting proposals, and we were not funded with that application. The mayor has made numerous attempts to contact them, I've made numerous attempts to contact them, asking them if they would like to participate in this project, and we've not been successful.
We can chain that Union Pacific to Casa Grande, right?
Yeah.
It's whatever the council decides, yes.
Okay. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay. Okay, we did have the opportunity to go out and solicit for proposals for this project, and we did receive one proposal, and that was from Ellison Mills Contracting LLC. We have made some modifications due to financial constraints, but they have worked very closely with the city in trying to get as much as possible done. A big cost, whether we choose to do all of it, part of it, has to do with the traffic control. That fee does not go away, whether we do all of the project, a little, that fee is still in there. So their proposal, which is option number one, which has a guaranteed price of $280,725.44, includes the painting. The painting is a very large portion of this project because it includes the sides, it includes the top under the underpass, and we've also included what is called sacrificial coating, which will be on, over the paint, which will allow us to be able to clean up any graffiti that might happen on the project. However, once we do the sacrificial coating on there, if we do have to wash it off, it is important to point out that we'll have to go back and redo it. So it protects the paint, but if we have to go in there and wash it off, we'll have to come back and do the sacrificial coating over it. Right now, the option number one includes the mural faux rock on the side as being painted. It's not the rock, the faux rock, it is being painted at this dollar amount. It also includes the rock that you see above the mosaic also will be painted. It includes the concrete arch around the mosaic, the Casa Grande lettering with metal, and the logo.
So Gloria, that arch that's around the mosaic that's on the side there, is that, will that be 3D or will that be painted?
It will be painted, right now with that dollar amount.
They won't use like a cantera stone or something like that, or a fake cantera stone?
Not at this time, not at this dollar amount. There is another option in here which does include it, but for cost savings, we did have to go to the painting.
But would it be 3D painting?
Yes, it is, yes. And we had some examples shown to us, and, and I mean, it looks like faux rock. Okay, on the other side, we have the Union Pacific metal, the logo, the saguaros, there will be 12 saguaros and 12 acatillos, and then the metal railroad artwork for the mosaic, and that's, if you see the railroad, that is a cost associated with that. And our landscaping for the median, Ellison Mills has offered to donate the cost for that, which is over $14,000 for that. And here's just an example of what the faux rock would look like as painted, being painted. Option number two would be everything in option number one, except for, it would actually have the faux rock and not the painting, and you can see the price there jumps up to $399,044. Option number three would only allow for painting, no artwork, it would just allow for the painting, and that cost would be $114,071. And that's, again, just showing the painting. And it would just be the painting on that. That concludes my presentation, but again, we do have, here, we have Lisa Swanson. Did you want to have something to say? I think Lisa has a couple of comments that she'd like to offer.
Just one thing, that with the painted rocks, isn't it after like 10 years, it would have to be touched up?
There is, there...
Yeah, I was gonna ask, what is the life expectancy of the paint?
There is a life expectancy of 10 years. I know that there's also been some concern about graffiti, what happens, you know, if we get graffiti on it. I can tell you that we've had, we have murals in the downtown area, we had, one of our first Arts and Humanities Commission project was the Lancola mural, in that I am aware of, none of these murals have ever been graffitied.
At least the graffiti artists have some community.
So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions, Gloria?
We have our member, Regis Summers, who serves in the Arts and Humanities Commission, is available.
Yeah, I just want, I want to thank all you young, all you young ladies for, for helping us with this project. I know it's been a labor of love, and I know Gloria, too, you've put a lot of time into this, so it's good to see it come into fruition, it's about time, and it's time to get it done. I do have one question, there's a sidewalk that's on the south side of that road that runs all the way underneath the underpass, and then continues, or doesn't continue, it actually stops at the top of the, of the underpass. Are we going to continue that and wrap it around, kind of connect it to our main road system, so there's some consistency there? Because I know when people walk through there, they have issues trying to take, you know, shopping carts through it and some other stuff.
Yes, we've looked at that sidewalk, and we're working with ADOT to see if we can get them to throw any money in, which I doubt we can, but we're looking at having our own streets department build most of the sidewalk. As, that would be separate from this project.
Okay. Nice, kind of do it all at the same time. Okay, well, just, I want to make sure we look at that, because if we're gonna do this, let's, let's do it right.
Amen.
Lisa?
And I, and I agree with you, I was, when this came to us initially, I was so excited to see, I mean, you know, when you, it's just an eyesore, when you go under that every time, and, and there's so many businesses that are coming in, and that is their entry into our community or out into the industrial area, so I'm excited to see it at this point, and thank you to all of you artists and everything you've done, of course. You know, I was concerned with the graffiti, the things that you addressed, you know, because there, you know, it is, you know, around town, so I'm happy to hear that there's a certain coating that goes on, and happy to hear that there's not too much that's happening to some of the murals around town, but there's still a chance. And so, just want to make sure that we're prepared. I don't know if we can put some type of cameras out there or something in case it happens, so maybe people will know that there's cameras and they're not gonna do it. If we're gonna invest this much, you know, what are the chances of putting some type of camera to, to catch someone if they did? But, but yeah, no, I mean, of course, you, you want the big package, but, you know, that, that is a lot of money, you know, to invest, you know, I'm, I'm happy with the middle-of-the-road plan that you guys have. I would like to see us, you know, if we are gonna put it in, you know, some type of maintenance in the future, we should, you know, plan to do it, maybe not out in 10 years, sooner, you know, put something in the maintenance, in the, in the budget for maintaining it. But no, I'm really happy and thank you very much for everything you guys have done.
Donna?
You know, just a couple of things that stand out to me, that we're using local talent, we ask for local input, and it's local pride, and, and you know, when we talk about, you know, the first one was $114,000 just to paint it, and so if you take that money away and look at this project, we're talking $165,000, $170,000, it is a lot of money, but if we were gonna spend money to make a new sign coming into Casa Grande that way, we have to look at what kind of money will we be spending, and this is, this is very well worth our while to do, and it is a sense of pride in that area, and we need to make sure that all areas coming into our city are taken care of, so I think this is great. Thank you to the committee, I know that they've worked very hard. Gloria, thank you for your leadership.
Mr. Powell?
I would like to hear from the committee, which ones you guys favor of the three plans, second, third plan, and why?
Come on, Regis, you don't lack in for any conversation. Give us your opinion.
You're the artist.
She's never shy.
Yeah, she's super shy.
Well, I'm in agreement that it be painted at this point, because we do not know the effects the trains have that go over that bridge and that overpass daily.
That's a good point.
The vibration, we did talk to the city of Tucson, am I too short?
No, she wants to put a timer on you.
Oh, shit. So, we did call Tucson, you know, to check on their underpasses, and there was very little on their mosaics, but they sat lower to the ground. And, you know, Tucson is beautiful right now as you drive into it, and, but right now, for me, painting it is the way to go at this point, until we learn more. We can always add stone and concrete arches later on, but my vote is for the painting.
You're saying option one, then?
Option one.
One, okay.
Option one?
Option one.
Option one is the 290?
Yes.
280?
The middle round.
Yeah.
Option one.
Yes. But on the graffiti, I have to say that, you know, none of them have been downtown, have never been graffitied.
Maybe we should have put a mural on the top of the library, and they wouldn't have graffitied our, the entrance to our library, then.
Well, and a suggestion is too, if it does become a problem...
It got tagged this weekend, by the way.
Oh, did it? Oh, shoot.
The library?
But what you do, if it does become a problem, is then you embrace those taggers, and you bring them onto the table and bring them up and say, hey, you know, this is your pride, it's our pride, maybe we give them a section, have at it, you know?
Yeah, that's a good idea, they can repaint our entrance to the library.
So that's one option, so...
Okay, thank you, guys.
There, I just...
Mayor, I have five murals around town, all different areas of town, not one has been tagged in the last five years, but also, what Regis said, is that one of the reasons I think they haven't been tagged is that I've used the community in the area where I painted the mural to help, and so they take pride in it as well. But that is a component that we talked about when we made this plan, is having the community involved in some aspect as we get started with the overpass, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Could I go ahead with a question? I was asking for them, but...
Go ahead, Mr. Powell.
Okay. Think I'm in trouble with the mayor. I would just like to say, truthfully, we're gonna have so much money, tax money, coming through that underpass from the west. The west used to be real quiet, it will no longer be quiet. This is, this is something that really will, will help, I know, when you go through Tucson, which you talked about, you think this is a classy city, you know, or Scottsdale, or some of the ones that have taken the, to decorate the sides or whatever, and you say, you know, this, this is done right, and, and I think that we need to realize what an asset this will be to our community, and what people will think and take out of it. There, I mean, Thornton Road, down, just next to you, is gonna be a busy bird when all of those people start working, and as they say, as time goes by, you're gonna see more and more industrial, which we've got on here tonight, too, come, come through that underpass on a daily basis, and, and it just, it sets us apart, it says, you know, we're a community with class just like Tucson, we're just not as populous as they are, so...
The only thing I would put on your agenda is take Union Pacific off of that underpass, seriously. Take them off. Just put another Casa Grande, I think it's appropriate, it's in our city, and just, because it's almost the same number of letters. I mean, unless anybody else has an objection to that. Because Union Pacific hasn't given us a dime. Matt?
Well, as someone who drives under that underpass multiple times, probably more than anybody in the room, every day, multiple times a day, it's sorely needed, and it, you know, and when you talk about art and you talk about a community, that's what brings the community together, you know, that's a big part of it, of the art, and then Mr. Powell said it very well, it's an investment, because it is the gateway, and one of our goals is, or many of our goals are art, checks that box, gateways to the community, you know, getting our signage down, and it means a lot to businesses, big businesses that come to this town to see that pride, especially when they're investing their millions of dollars on that side of town, you know, that we can put some in there, too. The, the next thing is, you know, the last time that was, there was a beautification project, I don't know if anyone remembers, maybe, I don't even think Larry was here, it's probably 30 years ago, you can still see the poles, and they tried the banners, and, you know, and you could sponsor a little sign underneath, and it was good for a while, but this one has some staying power, because I'm a huge fan of the metal artwork, you know, you can see in a lot of other cities, I can see it in my backyard, but the metal plants, they don't die, I mean, they're there, and they really make a good, they make a good impact on that, and it'll stay beautiful for a long time. And I really like the faux rock, because, you know, it can be repaired, and someone else that drives through there a lot, there, every once in a while, someone has a little incident with the concrete out there, so we do that, and I'd also like to say, and I'm sure you've looked at this, Lisa Swanson, is, there's some embossing already in the concrete out there that has been painted, so we need to feature that as well, because that's part of the old WPA project, I think it's originally WPA, right, that built that underpass, and it's near and dear to me, for many reasons, art being one... And it, it's near and dear to me, for many reasons, uh, art being one, and, you know, me, uh, almost living on that side of town every day of my life, so. And Gloria and the committee, I know Gloria works tirelessly on these art grants and art projects and the committee as well, so thank you all very much. And I, I think we've come to a good middle ground, and, and we just really have to look at it as an investment in our community, more than just spending money for something that's frivolous, because it is. And it'll, you know, it looks hor- it, you know, it looks bad right now with all the patches of different color, and this will help solve that problem as well.
I have one more.
No, you have no more time left.
I have, I have three minutes, it says right here. One aspect is to keep it beautiful, and if there is tagging that we have to do to repaint it or put the coating on it, is that we are making, for Lucid, other ones, we're making, um, tiles that can go into the mosaic, that they become sponsors.
Oh, good idea.
And that they can go, and there's Lucid, there's Southwest Gas, so and so forth, and we've discussed this.
There's Hexcel, there's Vit- National Vitamin, there's.
Benel Forty. I mean, there's so many aspects that we can put that tile in there, and they can give five thousand. That goes to an account to keep up the underpass.
Right.
Yeah, you gotta put together like a little flyer on that.
We can definitely look into it.
Something that, something we can share with our industries and get their input, not input, but their money? Donna?
I just, you know, Mayor, you, you brought up something about Union Pacific, and we all understand that, um, businesses have been hit hard this, last year. And I understand that, you know, perhaps they don't have money to put in. But to not respond to you, not respond to the city, is unprofessional. And so I'm fine with taking that name off.
I mean, I'm sure there'll have some, there'll be some recognition of Union Pacific somewhere on that overpass, because it's, it's massive, and they have some, there's some logos that are embossed on there too.
Yeah.
So, there'll be, certainly there's going to be railroad references on there, but they won't totally be left off. But we don't need to put their name on, up and down the, the underpass. Bob?
Yeah, I, first I want to say I love the, the project. I, um, I mean, I really like the, the third option with all the fancy stuff on it. That, that would be absolutely beautiful. But I'm going to have to voice a, a, another opinion here. Um, if I'm reading the RCA correctly, we have just shy of a hundred thousand dollars, uh, of our, our own funding. And we're looking at CARES Act, uh, funding to the tune of about two hundred thousand. COVID relief, um, I have a problem with spending that money on a project like this. So far, this council has looked at body cams for COVID relief, and we've approved, uh, finance department kiosk as part of COVID relief. I think we need to be careful. Uh, COVID's not over. There's, there's warnings of different variants coming through and questions on whether the current vaccines will, um, will be effective or not. Hopefully they will, and it, it won't be that big of an issue. Also, many of you know that I wear different hats, uh, in, in my professional life, and one of those is a, uh, justice court, pro tem. I've had to preside over eviction actions recently where people were, uh, injured, uh, by COVID, by, by the pandemic. And because they didn't fit the, the very, uh, fine, uh, requirements for, under the CDC, for COVID relief, they, they got evicted out of their house. I hear these stories all the time about how people are struggling. And, uh, going back on this, as I said, I, I get it. I love the project. I think that underpass has needed attention for a long time. This would be beautiful, uh, to do. But, and I won't in good conscience be able to, to, uh, vote yes to spend two hundred thousand dollars in, uh, CARES, CARES Act funding. Anyway, I know that's not, not probably a popular, uh, stance to take on this, but, but I, I won't be able to do it. Thank you.
Eric, members of the council, uh, to address Councilman Huddleston's comments precisely, or, or, I, I, I would also offer to the council the option of essentially utilizing our general fund, fund balance, um, to, to offset that, to offset that variance between the money that we have collected as well as, um, and, and ultimately, what we've envisioned or what we're anticipating is that we are going to have a projected excess of revenue this year because of some of the growth that we've been anticipating. And so I, I, I know that we've talked about this from a staff's perspective, that it's something that we could support. We've also talked about the idea of starting the project this fiscal year with the money that we have and asking council to budget the additional athor- budget authority in next year's with, through excess fund balance as well, so essentially spreading the project timeline over two years. I think all of those are options. Certainly if there, if, if, at the mayor and council's pleasure, if you'd like to specifically identify the use of fund balance, that is something that staff could support on this project as well.
Mr. Powell?
I, I just want to say one thing, and, and I, I understand what you're concerned about. But I, you know, if you really look at what happens with this pandemic, a lot of it's depression. People becoming suicidal, or going on drugs, or doing stuff, because this isn't the life that we plan to live and, and you've, you're locked in a house or whatever. And I think that this is important also to put a little sparkle in people's lives and feel like, you know, things are better. We've got a, we've got a, uh, an improvement to our communities as we go out west. And, and I know that's even like the school teachers know with the kids, uh, you know, how they've, we've got, uh, the ones here, it, if, if it's live, uh, with a teacher, it's so much better than if it's not. But that just, or things have to be worked out. But I think that it's something in our community that will say, you know, we're ha- we're a happy community. We stick together, we have beautiful art on the side of the, of the, uh, underpass and, and, uh, and, and I think it will, will raise the spirits of people. I know, uh, when you look at that, you just got to cut a smile. And, and so hopefully we'll get a lot of smiles out of it.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Bob?
I, I just wanted to say I appreciate Mr. Rain's, uh, comments and offers. I would love to spend fund balance on, on this. And, and as I said, my favorite is the, the, the top, uh, project. I think that's beautiful. Um, I'd love to spend fund balance, I'd rather see us dip into the council's contingency fund. Um, I, my, my opposition is, is strictly to the, uh, CARES funding.
Lisa?
And I think that's where I would like a little more explanation, because I thought we've had discussions on this in the past on, you know, because it were, the way we can use CARES funding. Um, so, I mean, isn't it really just going into the general fund, Larry? You're kind of just switching, putting some of the CARES money into something where you can use that funding and then open up some general funding from something that we budgeted in general funds? So, is it, and, and it's kind of the same with the body cams, because I know there was issues and questions on, on that and using the CARES funding. So, I just, I, you know, I thought that's where we were going to go with this project, and maybe the body cam project is doing just how you're, you know, um, classifying or whatever, that, that, that fund.
So, so essentially, the, the CARES funds that were distributed by the state were specifically identified with one intent, which is to essentially cover the personnel costs for police, fire, and, and some of our nine-one-one communications, um, personnel, those expenses for a, a specific period of time. So in theory, the, what that does is it reduces the amount of expenditure in our general fund, essentially giving us the capacity in our general fund to utilize the money that we're receiving for practically any purpose. And, and, and we've seen that throughout the state of Arizona, that, that various cities have elected to allocate the money that was distributed by the state for different items. Obviously, this mayor and council is aware of the fact that we have, we had more of what I consider to be a, a plan that outlined money going into, um, specifically into COVID-related types of, um, types of resources to our community. Roughly a million dollars was allocated for that. The council had also a- asked staff to reserve half of that, which we've done, for future discussion. And so, what I would, I guess I would answer the question specifically that we have met the obligation that the, that the governor issued related to the expenditure. From the plan that we established with the mayor and council, uh, there is, essentially you have the ability with that excess capacity to expend the money where you would like at this point, that fund balance, okay? And so, I, I do want to make sure that Councilman Huddleston is aware that when I indicated the use of fund balance, if that is the decision that the council elects to move tonight, and/or he brings up a good, uh, perspective that you could use council contingency if you'd like to do that. There is, there is capacity for that to transpire as well. Ultimately, what I was referring to is the excess revenues that we're anticipating in earning this year in fiscal year twenty versus what we had projected. We are anticipating that we're going to have an excess there. And, and so, so ultimately, it's the council's pleasure on how you would like to spend this money. You know, our plan is, uh, and, and just to kind of broaden that up a bit more, we, we know that we've got this rescue act that's, that's, that's coming out as well, that we're going to be putting some additional thought in discussions with the council about how that money would like to be allocated as well. There, there, there are a few more restrictions than what the governor had placed on the money we had listed. But essentially, we have met the obligation by covering the expenses of the, of the police, fire, and nine-one-one communications personnel. So in theory, it becomes a, an excess fu- excess fund balance. Um, however, the council, through the plan, had given staff some level of guidance on what it is that you wanted us to expend, the, the process that you wanted us to expend it on. So, um, I hope that makes sense. But I, I guess ultimately, what I want this council to know is that, at least from a financial perspective, we can modify that plan. We, our, our intent is to be bringing in at least some level of discussion back to the mayor and council in the near term. And I also want to say that, at least at this point in time, our, our, our financial revenue projections, as you know from our January meeting, are exceeding what we had, our actual revenues are exceeding what we had projected. So there is going to be some capacity there as well.
So Larry, if I, if I could make a recommendation then, can, what, what do we need to do to change the ordinance? Can we do it tonight? Change the ordinance to reflect that the money should come from the general fund?
Yes.
Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Hang on, hang on.
If could.
Can I, I was simply voicing my own opinion, you know? I, I don't want to blow this thing up because of the way I feel about it. Now, I don't, I, I, if I understand it correctly, this is pending a motion, uh, from the, from the council on which project we want to do, one, two, or three. And, um, you know, a- as I said, if the, if the rest of the council's ready to address it, I, I don't have a problem with that. I'm, I'm not going to scream and yell. But, uh, but I, I'm just uncomfortable with spending the COVID relief money on it, me personally.
Then, then that being said, never mind my question. And I would like to call.
Well, I, I would like to, to see what we could do, because I, you know, he has a good point about, we have the money. But it's, it's, because we want to use the CARES Act properly. But we just can put that in the ordinance. If, fund balance.
If I could, the ordinance doesn't speak, when we do ordinances, we don't speak to where the funds actually come, right? We ask for council to approve projects. We ask for council to approve them at certain amounts in most cases. You know, in this case, the draft ordinance, uh, has sort of option one in there, two hundred and eighty thousand, you know, as recommended by staff. But it doesn't speak to where that funding comes from. That's always kind of on the back end, and it's in the budgets that council approves, all of which is always subject to moving around. And, you know, Mr. Raines can, can sort of look at what that funding is. We always listen to what council does. But it doesn't actually require any change to the ordinance. Um, you could certainly change it to restrict the funding source if you so desired. But we, we virtually never, uh, talk funding sources, if you think about it. We never say this is from the general fund, or the sewer fund, or those. Um, we usually tell you what fund it's coming from, so that you do understand that we have a plan to pay for it.
Right. And Mayor, I wanted to follow up. So, when Larry was talking about, we had a plan of where we were going to use that CARES funding, and this was one of the projects that we included months ago. So that's why you're bringing it to us with that funding, because we all agreed that, that this is a project we wanted to use those funding, um, um, resources with. Is that correct? That's why you gave.
At the time that the plan was passed, this project was included. I know that, I know that there was some hesitation on the part of council members, but, but at the time that the plan was passed, this was one of the projects that was identified as, as being potentially funded with, with those, with those, um, revenues.
Right, okay.
And additional budget capacity that was generated.
Right.
Okay, then, I'm still going to ask for an ordinance number, please. Gloria?
Ordinance number three-two-five-seven, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting their proposal from Allison Mills Contracting LLC to provide construction manager at-risk services for the Gilabend Highway Union Pacific Railroad Underpass Mosaic Project, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number three-two-five-seven as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. And Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Huddleston?
Yes, because I'm comfortable with what Brett briefed us on and what Larry has agreed to.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, thank you, Gloria. Go to work.
Do we need to put in there about UPRR, though?
Oh.
No, you don't have to do that either.
All right, okay. Good.
I don't want to be hunted down by the Union Pacific.
We, we'd like them to hunt you down, then you can ask them, right?
You can quote me.
Okay, our next item is item I-two, ordinance number three-two-five-five, bid for Dave Bang Associates on some playground, playground equipment. Steve, is that you?
Thank you, mayor and council. Uh, staff is recommending, the mayor and the city council authorize a contract with Dave Bang Associates for playground equipment in an amount not to exceed sixty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. This is to replace existing equipment in Rotary Park. Please note, this contract does include sixty-three thousand, um, one hundred and four dollars and four cents from a proposal, and then a five percent contingency that makes up the difference. The playground in Rotary Park is about twenty years old, or, excuse me, more than twenty years old, and it has reached the end of its useful life. Uh, the, there's not much activity in that park, uh, because of the, the age of the equipment and the kind of equipment that's there. So we did a few proposals and looked around and, um, did some research. Dave Bang provided us with a great proposal. Our idea in the park was to have a spinning piece, a saucer-type swing, a climber, and a slide. And Dave Bang was able to provide those, um, within our budget and also on a state contract. All of these pieces are ADA compliant. And in order to do, um, what we wanted to do, we're going to expand the playground just slightly. There's a, there's a tree there that we'll remove, expand the playground, and provide a little bit more space for everybody to be safe. The upgrade to the playground equipment is part of the makeover of Rotary Park as it's becoming a trailhead for our new community trail project. When the makeover is complete, it'll fe- feature an expanded parking lot, a refurbished Ramada, ADA sidewalks, updated playground, and access to the first mile of the community trail. This prod- or this equipment will be purchased using a Mohave contract purchasing agreement number one-ninety-dash-oh-two-two-one. And with that, oh, by the way, the funding is coming from CDBG funds, and the budget for, for this park is ninety-five thousand for that.
And Steve, will that include like kind of cleaning it up, you know, the bushes and shrubbery along, along the, uh, that wash corridor there?
Yep, we're going to improve the sightlines in there and, and.
So people can see that the pathway starts there too, and all that good stuff?
And the, the parking lot will remove some of those trees also to create a larger parking lot there.
That'd be nice, that'd be a nice improvement for that. Matt?
Again, another good investment in our community.
Again, another good investment in our community. But, and the neat thing that I don't think is big enough point is it's one of our trailhead for, for our walking trail, so I'm really, we've had a lot of discussions about that, Steve, and I'm glad that it's going forward, and I'm excited to see that. And did you ask the Rotary Club about helping, or? Because I, I could. I can't guarantee anything, but I'm going to, I'm going to mention it and see.
Sure. We did not for this particular piece of equipment, because of the CDBG funding, but for the overall park, we sure can.
I was going to mention that. And my other question, you and the police chief go the same eye doctor?
I think so.
You guys got the same eyes? But great project and.
$10 readers.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just happy to see it as part of our, our trail, our trail system, you know, and, and that area of town.
When's the trail going to be built?
Yesterday.
We're still, we're still working on the permit. One of the minor little issues is this in a floodway, so there's a few more steps to, to follow there, so.
Where do you park the horse trailers if you want to ride the trail?
Right. That we'll have to work on.
Circle K.
Anybody else have any questions for Steve?
No.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, then, no more questions or comments. I'd like to call for an ordinance number, please. Gloria?
Ordinance number 3255, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Dave Bang Associates, Inc. for the purchase and installation of new playground equipment, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Dave Bang Associates, Inc.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3255 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes, this right here is the information I got on this, and we'd serve it in about 10 minutes, but it's, it's probably three pounds of paper.
Mayor Pro Tem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, item J-1, these are boards and commissions appointments, so I just want to kind of give a call out to these folks who volunteered to be on our boards and commissions, and thank them profusely for their time. The first item is J-1, which is approving the appointment of Amanda Stuland and Jean Capell Jones to the Arts and Humanities Commission for terms to expire on September 30, 2023, and approve a waiver also for residential requirement rule for Ms. Capell Jones. She lives in, just outside of the city, but she wants to be very active in our community. I interviewed her along with Donna, and we were duly impressed with both, with both young ladies. Mayor McFarland, move approval?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay? Congratulations to both of them, and thank you both, thank them both for, oh, there you are. Wave and say hello, at least say, introduce yourself.
I thought that was holy.
I wanted to introduce myself. I'm Amanda Stuland, and I look forward to serving this community, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, Amanda. See, I told you we'd give you a call out if you came. All right, the next item is J-2, and this is considering approving the reappointment of Gary Wood to the Board of Adjustments with a term to expire on November 17, 2024. And as I usually do, I ask if they're here, but, so that was my bad, Amanda, and I apologize. So I don't see Gary, though, so he's a reappointment, and I'd recommend his approval.
Mayor, I approve the reappointment of Gary Wood?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay? Thank you, thank you, everyone. And again, congratulations and a thank you to Gary Wood. Next is J-3, consider approving the appointment of David Gutierrez and Thomas Lopez to the Police Advisory Boards with terms to expire on February 20, 2023, and approve a waiver for residency requirements rules for Mr. Lopez. Again, he lives just on the outskirts of the city, but he has a lot of, he has a, a police background, and we think, Donna and I think that he would make a great addition to the, to the Police Advisory Board.
Mayor, I, I move to approve the appointment of David Gutierrez and Thomas Lopez to the Police Advisory Board.
Second.
And I don't see either of them here, so, but just to thank them both for their service. All right, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, again, thanks to all of our boards and commissions, even those not here tonight, and those who have been serving, we do appreciate it. Just a public thank you to you all for your, your time and service. Next is our ordinances, resolutions, and other matters subject to requiring action by the council. K-1 is consider approving the appointments of Sherwood Johnson III and Albert Valtierra to serve as the deputy city magistrates with a term to expire on December 31, 2022. And I think, if you all recall, Judge Deani had, had suggested that she needs a couple of additional backup deputy city magistrates to, just in case the current magistrates are not available. So this is, this is the first two appointments to the court.
This request is actually not to actually hire deputy city magistrates, but essentially make sure that we have availability for someone to call it, in case we have a conflict case, if we have a case that comes in, maybe the city's involved in how we need to bring somebody from outside that doesn't have any connections to the city, that's the sole purpose of this request.
Right, so they're not, they're not permanent employees, they're not employees.
Correct. They're just pretty much on an on-call basis if they are available.
Right, okay. Anybody have any questions for Judge on this, these two? Yeah, Bob?
Are they already certified, or will they have to go through NJO?
Sherwood Johnson is currently on the Pro Tem list out of Maricopa County, and Albert Valtierra, he has previously served on the Pinal County JP Pro Tem list.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve these two appoint, appointments.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, so move to K-2, consider approving the appointment of Anna Guerra to serve as deputy city magistrate with a term to expire on December 31, 2022.
Believe me, she doesn't want to be city manager.
I don't blame her.
This appointment request is for our court administrator, Anna Guerra, to be appointed as a deputy city magistrate. Part of her job description includes a duty as to serve as deputy city magistrate, obviously. You are not able to serve in that capacity without approval of mayor and council. Off the top of my head, she has been our court administrator for somewhere in the neighborhood of about three years, so it's time to get her trained and, and get her in that capacity.
Judge, she would, she would be the last on the list in, in case of an emergency that you would have somebody here, because she's obviously a full-time employee.
Court administrator is probably a, a full-time plus position, so yes, it would be pretty much a last-minute issue if, for some reason, say I get sick and I need to go to the doctor for a couple hours in the afternoon, and we have a court calendar, we can make sure that we have somebody there available to cover. We also have individuals that come in throughout the day seeking protective orders. Say we have a busy court calendar, somebody comes in and they need to file a protective order, that is a case that she would be able to handle as well right, right away, so that way we don't interrupt the current calendar that we're working on.
Now, to Bob's point, would she need to be trained?
She would need to complete new judge orientation, and we had budgeted for this year for her to be trained due to COVID, that training was online, and we got a huge discount if she was able to do it online, and she's actually in her final week this week. So after this week, she will have completed new judge orientation.
Okay. Go ahead, Bob.
Just for the sake of the rest of the council, this practice is very common within the county, it probably is at other magistrate courts as well, and that person also employed in a, in a different capacity is kind of a last-minute failsafe. They don't generally fill the, the court calendar for trials or hearings or anything like that, but as Deani said, if, if an order comes in unexpectedly, they can hear it and sign off on it, so it is very valuable.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Thank you, Bob. All right, thank you, Deani.
Thank you.
All right, so hearing and seeing none, then we'll consider approving appointment for Anna Guerra for this service as deputy city magistrate with terms to expire on December 31. Do I have a motion to approve her?
So moved. Second.
All right, so the motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Tell Anna, tell Anna thank you. Okay, the last but not least, oh, just kidding, Larry, is approving the transition of city manager Larry Rains from his current contract to a regular city employee status effective.
Excuse me, while I prepare my technology here.
Effective April 11, 2021.
All right.
Scott?
Can you hear me now?
No, I'm not. Now I am.
Now you can hear us?
I got it.
Okay.
Mayor McFarland, members of the council, the recommendation before you this evening is to transition city manager Larry Rains from his current contract employment, or more technically, his, his employment as a leased employee of the city, back to regular city employment, effective on April the 11th. Now, over a year ago, council engaged in a discussion about the possibility of allowing city manager to begin to, to draw earned retirement benefits from the Arizona State Retirement System, and retain him as our city manager with a contract with an independent third party. The, the rules of the Arizona State Retirement System allow this to happen, and so that was the action of the council over a year, a little over a year ago. So for the past year, Larry has been a leased employee, if you will, operating as our city manager under contract with First Smart Works, the independent third party. Smart Works was purchased by the other company in the state that does this third-party leasing called ESI, Educational Services Incorporated. And so ESI assumed our contract, and then on July 1, we went ahead and did a new contract with ESI. So now come we, after a year has gone by, Arizona State Retirement System rules allow an employee who has been out of the system for a year to return to regular employment without impairing earned retirement benefits. And so that's the intent of this action this evening, is to transition Mr. Rains from the contract or lease status back to regular city employment, so he would become a regular city employee, as he was prior to the action a little over a year ago, effective on, on April the 11th. Based on the results of our comprehensive employee classification and compensation study, Mr. Rains would be placed in range 104, which is the pay range assigned to this classification, and step seven would be his step placement, including, and he would receive the normal benefit package, health insurance and what have you at that particular point in time. So that's the essence of the discussion this evening, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, first of all, I'm in full support of this, and I praise the, the council for making this decision a year ago, but Mr. Rains is the only city employee that's been able to take advantage of this policy, and I'd like to see it expanded to other city employees in the future that can take advantage of it. It's been a huge help to our school district in keeping talent within our school district. Frank Davidson, there are three principals that serve this, but we, it's across the border, across the district in keeping talented people, and I'd like to see it as well in the city and not in other, in city employees be able to take advantage of this thing. Scott didn't mention the savings, this is a win-win for the city not having to pay Larry's retirement anymore. It's a, it's a win, obviously, for Larry, and we all won because we got to keep him where he's at, so I would hope that we can expand it in the future.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions of Scott? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Powell.
I just was going to say, the subject approved transition of Larry, of city manager Larry Rains from contract to regular city employment, there's nothing regular about the way Larry does things, so, exceptional.
Second.
Well said. So is that a motion?
That's a motion, that we approve.
And you seconded it, Bob?
Second, yes.
Did you get that, Gloria?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Congratulations, Larry.
Good day, Larry.
And welcome back.
I told you we're only throwing you one retirement card, right?
Next item is item K-4, resolution number 5290, it's adopting the Alza Wells annexation.
Mr. Mayor, council? All right, here we go. All right. This request is approval for two items related to the Alza Wells annexation. It's 45.3 acres, generally located at the southeast corner of Thornton Road and Peters Road. The first item that, you know, we're seeking approval is the approval of the infrastructure and service plan associated with the annexation. If that is approved, the number, the second item is the approval of the annexation and the initial zoning of the land. You can see the location shown here, highlighted in the red, just across from the Lucid facility. Just a quick overview of the ownership outlined in the dashed is the annexation area. We've got the Alza Sheep Company that has the blue parcel, so there's a portion, a tiny portion of that parcel that's actually in the city, and, and a portion that's in the county at the current time. And then we do have the Wells property to the south, and then the center property is actually BIA, it's a San Carlos irrigation project piece of land.
So will that remain not in the city, or will it be moved into the city?
That will be moved into the city and, with this annexation. We weren't able to leave them out to create a county island.
Okay.
So, in regards to the infrastructure and service plan, ARS 9471.0, or .0, requires that the city annexing the area shall have an approved plan, policy, or procedure to provide the annexed territory with appropriate levels of infrastructure and services to serve the anticipated new development. That infrastructure and service plan has been prepared by staff and was provided to council for your review. Just a little overview of what we know about the infrastructure is Thornton Road will be completed per the Lucid Development Agreement. Extension of the water main in Thornton from Peters to Selma will be constructed in conjunction with the Phase Two Lucid improvements, and then the wastewater service will be provided via an extension of the Peters Road wastewater main. Oh, excuse me. Just a little bit about the annexation, the, it, it was a logical and appropriate annexation area related to the current city boundaries. It meets all the requirements set forth in the ARS statutes. Blank petition and map were filed on February 4. After that, we held a public hearing on March 1. No objections were raised at that public hearing. Petition signatures were collected after the 30-day wait period, and two out of the three impacted property owners signed that annexation petition, which was then recorded on March 23. And then the final thing, the most important thing, is the collective property owner signatures exceeds the required 50% of the property owners and 50% of the property value. In regards to the initial zoning, ARS statutes require that the city annexing the area adopt a zoning classification that permits densities and uses no greater than those permitted by the county immediately. the county immediately before the annexation. So substantial changes in the zoning of the annexed territory shall be made according to existing procedures established by the city for rezoning of that land. To comply with this requirement, staff is proposing that we put it in the urban ranch zone district right now. That's the comparable zone district to what it's currently in, which is general rural in the county. In regards to the fiscal impact, we didn't do an analysis. It wasn't prepared, as we do not have adequate information regarding the scope, characteristics, or scale of future industrial development in this annexation area. So kind of in conclusion, recommendation one is recommended that the mayor and city council approve a resolution adopting the infrastructure and service plan for the 45.3 acres, generally located at the southeast corner of Thornton and Peters Road. And recommendation two is that the mayor and city council approve an ordinance approving the annexation and initial city zoning of urban ranch for the 45.3 acres. Can I answer any questions?
Anyone have any questions? And all the property owners have signed off on this, right?
Just two of the three property owners have signed off on it. That's Joe Alza and William Wells.
They're the majority.
Yeah, that'd be 66% of the ownership, and they represent more than 50% of the value of the land.
Okay. Anyone have any comments, questions, anything? Okay, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Seeing none, then I'll consider resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5290, a resolution of the council, city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the Alza Wells Annexation Area Infrastructure and Service Plan.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5290 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, now for the second part, then can I get an ordinance number, please?
Ordinance number 3258, an ordinance extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Casa Grande, Pinal County, state of Arizona, pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter IV, Article VII, Arizona revised statutes and amendments thereto by annexing thereto certain territory contiguous to the existing city limits of the city of Casa Grande and authorizing initial zoning of urban ranch for said territory.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3258 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is K5. Again, consider resolution and an ordinance for the Illinois Ethington Annexation Area. Joe?
I'm going to change the location and the acres on this one, so that's about it. So the request is for, again, for two items related to the Illinois's Ethington Annexation. It's 1,062 acres, generally located South America of the Casa Grande Highway between Burris and Bianco. Again, the first one's for the approval of the infrastructure and service plan, and then the, if that's approved, the second would be approval of the annexation and initial zoning to urban ranch. Again, the location shown here, highlighted in green, and we can kind of go through the ownership a little bit, and the purple is the Alza Ranches. There we have the Lindzenmeyer Melton family property in Keeling. There's 33 feet below as well, south of Clayton, that you can kind of see highlighted in red. That's the right-of-way of Clayton that we are required to annex. And then the yellow is actually owned by Lou Villa Sturgill, and then we have a final piece owned by the Brady family, that's the Burris right-of-way. So it's just 33 feet. Again, ARS requires the city annexing, the area shall have an approved plan, policy, or procedure to provide infrastructure and services to the property. What we know about this property is the water line is located currently in Quartzon Road. Sewer's located along the Burris alignment at the current time. Extension and requirements for all services will be based on future development needs. We don't know quite what's going in there yet. It's the same timeline as the previous annexation. It was a logical and appropriate annexation area based on the city's boundary. It meets all the requirements of the ARS. We filed the original petition on February 4th, held the public hearing on March 1st with no objections. Petition signatures were collected after the 30-day wait period. We have three out of the five impacted properties owners signed the annexation petition, which was recorded on March 23rd, and the collective property owner signatures does exceed the 50% of the property owners and 50% of the property value. In regards to the initial zoning, we're required to give it a zoning no greater than those permitted in the county at the time of the annexation. Again, this one's zoned general rural. We're asking it to be zoned into the urban ranch, which is the most comparable category the city has. Similar with the fiscal impact, we haven't prepared anything due to we don't have the scale, scope, or characteristics of any of the future industrial development that will occur in the area. Recommendation one is that the mayor and the city council approve resident, a resolution adopting the infrastructure and service plan for the 1,062 acres, generally located South America of the Casa Grande Highway between Burris and Bianco Road. Recommendation two is recommended that the mayor and city council approve the ordinance approving the annexation and initial city zoning of urban ranch for the 1,062 acres. Can I answer any questions on this one? Yes.
Mr. Powell?
If you look, basically, they're going to make this I-2?
Yeah, Councilmember Powell, the next item you'll see was the zoning from urban ranch into general industrial.
Okay, one of the questions I have, and it's up to the property owners, but if it's I-2, if somebody has a ranch and they sell it, it would have to be I-2 that they sell it under. It couldn't just bring somebody else to have their fields or whatever.
The zoning, correct, the zoning would be I-2.
So they'd be locked in, they'd have to be I-2 if they sold it. Now, the thing I'm wondering about, I don't know what they're going to do with it, but they're right next to, as you can see in this picture, all of the development. I mean, they're right, just right across the fence from it, and depending on what they want to do with it, I'd hate to see, you know, if they plan to do some development residentially, they may not, I don't know. But I know people within this area here are locked into I-2 period when we change it here in a few minutes.
So the zoning's only going to be for the three property owners within the annexation area. All other zoning will stay the same as it currently is. If it's in the county, it's most likely general rural, or the Desert Carmel does have some single-family residential zoning that's not general rural, but those zonings will stay the same. It's just the area highlighted in green, which is the three property owners that will be granted into the I-2 industrial.
Now, there's, how many are, there's a lot of farmland in there right now. I don't, as I say, it just makes me uncomfortable that if the, if we go ahead and do this, that they're locked with I-2, because the normal guy, when he sells something, he doesn't have a corporate, somebody coming in industrially to do something with the property, and that would frighten me if I owned land there, and I think it should, the people that do.
Councilmember Powell, there's also the issue that our general plan is already indicated as this being in our manufacturing and industry category for our 2030 general plan.
I don't.
To create the industrial corridor. If development does come and those properties are still in as residential or ranch properties, we will certainly look at creating a proper buffer or at least putting on some restrictions to the development to make sure that we're adequately addressing compatibility issues between two different land uses.
You know, compatibility is what I really thanked the, our planning department for this year, is including that when you're doing this, what's compatible. And this is just filled with people now, if everything in here is eventually going to, they can keep doing what they're doing until they, the people that have this, until they sell it?
Absolutely.
And then it would be I-2 when they sell it.
So again, the zoning's just for the three properties that are being annexed. So if the other additional properties, which we think would be a good fit to be actually annexed as well, if they desire to request a zone change into industrial, they are, they are set as far as our general plan would go if the 2030 general plan is adopted. So we would support both an annexation and a zone change for those properties as well, but they do not lose their zoning rights at the current time.
That I wanted to hear, thank you, sir.
And Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Powell, just to be clear, because they do have a grandfather right to continue it as a legal non-conforming use. I've heard a little bit of talk about losing that when they sell the property. They wouldn't lose it when they sold the property as long as the new property owner continued that legal non-conforming use. So if you have, if you're farming in this area now, you're, and you were allowed to do so before, you'll continue to be allowed to do that, and any subsequent purchaser of the property could continue that use as well. So it's only when they want to change the use that they would.
That brings a lot of comfort to what we're looking at, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions, Matt?
But to be clear, there's no houses there yet, right? There's just all.
No.
Yeah.
It's just platted.
It looks like it, houses.
There's actually some, I believe, Keeling's houses.
No, but I mean the platted ones.
No, the platted ones.
There are a couple that are out there that are established within Desert Carmel, I believe. Maybe one, one or two abutting or nearby this annexation area. They're across the Bianco Road, there might be one or two in that area.
But it's not a development, Matt, to answer your question.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to be clear, because everyone knew that.
Bob?
I just wanted to make a comment. On either one of these annexations tonight, but there is still service levels that go along with that. There's extra roads to grade, there's extra area to patrol to some extent. I mean, I know that we're not going to assign an officer to this district, but it does kind of creep up on you, and the statement I wanted to make tonight was to city staff that is that we're aware of this, and we will monitor it, and we will, in every way possible, add resources as these areas start building up. I wanted to add, certainly we have an expectation that the census is going to show that our community has grown quite a bit in population, and all those things kind of chip away at service levels, and I just want to put out there that council is aware and that we're more than willing to step up when the time comes. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. No more comments, then I'll consider the first portion of this K5, which is a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5291, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the Illinois's Ethington Annexation Area Infrastructure and Service Plan.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of resolution number 5291 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, next is the second half of this, consider an ordinance number for K5, please.
Ordinance number 3259, an ordinance extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Casa Grande, Pinal County, state of Arizona, pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter IV, Article VII, Arizona revised statutes and amendments thereto by annexing thereto certain territory contiguous to the existing city limits of the city of Casa Grande and authorizing initial zoning of urban ranch for said territory.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 3259 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next are our public hearings for tonight. We have, the first item is L1, which is a hearing considering ordinance number 1178.407. Joe?
Thank you. I mistimed my walk back up here both times when that second vote came in. All right, so the city of Casa Grande is requesting a zone change from urban ranch to general industrial for approximately 1,062 acres of land generally located South America of the Casa Grande Highway between Burris and Bianco Road. You can see it highlighted in purple there. The purpose of this request is to align the zoning with the existing general plan and manufacturing and industry land use category and position the property for potential industrial When looking at our review criteria for the zone change, we make sure that it's in conformance with our general plan. The first one is the actions consistent with the city's general plan, including the goals and policies and applicable elements. Among other items, this request supports the following goal, as the area for the proposed request does lie in our Phase One growth area in the general plan 2020. The second one, a rezoning conforms to the general plan if it proposes land uses, densities, or intensities within the range of identified uses of the general plan. The request for a zone change to I-2 is an allowable and appropriate land use within the general plan. And then the third one is that the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. As you are aware, this zone change is in conjunction with the previous annexation. The purpose of the annexation and zone change is to facilitate the growth of future industrial users. This zone change will also expand the industrial corridor along that Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway. We did have a public notification, met or exceeded all city requirements. We did not receive any comments in regards to this zone change. Planning commission on a six-oh vote recommend the mayor and city council approve the zone change request, DSA 2100016 from urban ranch to general industrial I-2 with the following condition. We did expand this a little bit, so in accordance with the Casa Grande General Municipal Code Section 1768 550, the property owner shall dedicate the necessary right-of-way in accordance with the classification of roadways as set forth in the city's general plan 2020, as amended and in effect as of the adoption date of this ordinance. Such dedication shall occur no later than the time of platting or site plan approval or as otherwise provided by this Casa Grande Municipal Code, but shall also be required earlier if requested by the city as part of an existing or proposed public works project. Nothing in this condition alleviates a property owner from compliance with any other dedication requirements set forth in the Casa Grande Municipal Code as amended from time to time. Do I have any questions?
Any questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Any questions? All right, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the floor to any public that may have any comment about item L-1. Anyone from the audience? Okay. Seeing no one rush up to the podium, then I will close the public hearing and call for an ordinance number, please Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.407, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch to general industrial on approximately 1,062.57 acres of property generally located of the Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway between Burris Road and Blanco Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.407.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, the next item on our public hearing is L-2, consider ordinance
number 1178.133.1. Mr. Teis?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a zone change from B-2 to PAD for a property that's located on the northeast corner of Treacle and Cottonwood. You probably have seen it right across the road from the Safeway development. The driver for this zone change is because the contract purchaser wishes to build a, a build-to-rent development on this site, similar to the build-to-rent project that council approved the zoning for on Florence and Ash at a recent meeting. So similar type of development. In this case, the planning commission, in, in addition to considering the zone change, did consider a major site plan for the development. That gave us some details on what the development would look like. And I'm going to share some of that with you this evening just for informational purposes. The planning commission did recommend approval of this zone change as well as approved the major site plan for the development, subject to council's approval of the zone change. So you can see the subject site, currently zone B-2. I've, at the north-west cor, northeast corner of Cottonwood and Treacle. I guess in terms of, as we look at compatibility and how this fits in with the fabric and the surrounding zoning, on the south side of Cottonwood, on both of those corners, we have office zoning and commercial zoning. On the north side of Cottonwood, across the road, we have the Safeway Shopping Center, which is zoned commercial. To the east, we have some vacant multifamily within the Cottonwood Ranch development. So there is a, a large multifamily piece just to the east. And to the north, there's also a vacant piece of commercial property within the Cottonwood Ranch PAD. So the zoning of this would be to PAD to accommodate a build-to-rent. You see a little bit of the details there, that it's a 16.4 acre parcel. If this was approved and the build-to-rent, a project moved forward, they would create 174 individual dwelling units with an overall density of 12.2 dwelling units per acre. Those would be one and two-story single fa, homes, they're actually a mixture of single-family and duplex. One to three-bedroom units. The sizes would range from 726 square feet to 1,586. So kind of a range in size. And each of the units would actually have a, a private outdoor living area, as well as a central clubhouse amenity. So as we consider zone changes by both staff, planning commission, and city council, we have a host of review criteria that are in our code. Just want to talk about the top three here. All the rest were covered in your staff report that I believe was attached to your RCA. So one of the first things we look at is planner, planners, is the compatibility issue and how this development might fit in the, sort of the puzzle of city development. So you can see that we would be replacing the commercial on that corner with some medium-density residential. We find that's appropriate for a couple reasons. One, we've kind of overzoned the commercial on all of our arterial intersections, to the point, you know, with the changing demographics and development schemes, we, we probably have way in excess of the commercial zoning than we really need to support in the community. So we think it makes sense to convert some commercial to residential. We think that this mu, medium-density residential does fit well with the multifamily being next to it and the commercial around it. We don't really see that there's any real compatibility issues with the, with the rezoning. You also have frontage on two major arterials with Cottonwood and Treacle. In terms of the general plan, this site is currently located within our neighborhoods land use category of the current general plan. In neighborhoods land use category, we do allow single-site multifamily or higher-density residential development on sites that are 25 acres or less, up to 18 DU's per acre. And of course, this one is at 12.2 DU's per acre. So we do allow that. Additionally, we, we propose, we kind of advocate for development on sites that are infill development sites, that have infrastructure readily available to them, and city services and, that can be provided efficiently and effectively. This site meets those criteria as well as a, as an infill site. So this is a little bit of a blow-up of what the site plan might look like for the, for the project. If this is, zoning is approved, this is the major site plan. We do not have construction drawings yet, but this is the level of detail that we have on the development at this point. Little bit more information on the types, the elevation, the types of dwellings that might be built in this build-for-rent. Again, they're not going to be owned, they all be rented. They do not need a certificate of assured water supply because they're not subdividing. These would just be all owned by one investor, one developer, who would control the, the rental of all the units. Each of the units would have a private outdoor patio. You can see those in green with those dots representing the masonry walls that go in between each of the private patio areas. Because this is being rezoned to PAD, Planned Area Development, it is technically governed by the residential design standards for PAD. I can tell you that when these PAD design standards were written in 2003, this product type did not exist in the marketplace. Our residential design standards address really single-family developments and kind of traditional subdivisions, and set some standards for those. And then they set some standards for multifamily. But this build-to-rent is kind of a hybrid. It's in between there. Doesn't meet the definition of multifamily, because it's both single-family and duplexes. And it doesn't meet the definition of a subdivision, because it's all on one lot. But having said that, it technically still is subject to the PAD residential design standards. But it really doesn't fit well, and it doesn't meet all of the design standards. So I'm going to point out where it does not meet them, and also tell you that the design standards allow both planning commission and city council to grant exceptions from those where warranted. So the first thing that this project does not meet with the design standards is minimum lot size. So the, the residential design standards say that basically 7,000 square foot average lots, you can have down to 6,000, as long as you have an equal number that are over eight, for resulting in an average lot size of 7,000 square feet for lots. Of course, there's one big lot here. If I took the numbers of units, divided it by the acreage of the site, I'd end up with about 3,500 square foot per dwelling unit. So they would be asking for an exception from that. You can see the, the exception, the justification is it's not traditional single-family. And maybe more importantly, they're providing 30% open space, which is much higher than the standard open space requirement of 15% within our PAD's for multifamily. So they are doubling the amount of open space. There are also standard side yard setbacks in our PAD design standards for five and 10-foot side yard setbacks. Of course, here, there really aren't any property lines to have setbacks from, but they're kind of building-to-building relationships or separation. So they are proposing to have eight-foot minimum between, between buildings. There's also a requirement for patio covers on every home, and our rear yard patio covers on, for every home in our residential design standards, that kind of match architecturally the roof line of the house. So in this case, they are not providing rear, covered rear yard patios, but they are providing outdoor, private outdoor yard space, if you will, that's walled in, and in many cases, a covered front porch. So there is private open space, but it's not necessarily a covered patio. Our residential design standards also require a variety of floor plans and architectural styles. And so they are meeting essentially the, the five-four plans with two elevations. I believe our standard is five-four plans with three elevations, so they don't have three. They have, do have two different styles. They are var, are varying the bulk and scale of the structures by both single-family and two-story, to get a little variety in the design. And they're increasing the color schemes to 10 different color schemes. So as I mentioned to you, the PAD residential design standards do allow for exceptions to be approved by both planning commission and city council with a finding of basically a special circumstances. And two of the special circumstances that the code allows for the granting exception, one is for a proposed infill development. And so I've already mentioned how this is kind of a classic infill project, so it certainly meets that. And the second exception is where you have a development proposals that are so unique that the strict conformance with the standards would be counterproductive to achieving essentially the product design, the diversity, creativity, and sustainability sought by the PAD. As I mentioned, this product type of the build-to-rent really did not exist in the marketplace when the PAD design standards were created in 2003. Staff and the planning commission both found that these exceptions were met and that the, the exceptions were warranted. There was some, quite a bit of discussion at planning commission about access and traffic to this site. You can see that the entrance is full access off from Treacle. It was basically lines up right at the end of that new median that we built on Treacle, in front of Safeway. So that full access is, allows for both right-in, right-outs, and left-ins and left-outs. So it would be full access, because it's just north of that median. There was a lot of discussion by planning commission whether that was appropriate. The applicants did provide a traffic report, an analysis that was reviewed by our traffic engineer, who felt that that was appropriate and safe for that to occur. There is an exit strategy to the north, an exit entrance to the north. I can see that red arrow, but that's only exit only, that's not entrance. There was also some discussion about a turn lane, whether or not a right turn lane was needed on Cottonwood for westbound traffic or northbound traffic on Cottonwood. They was going to be turning north on Treacle. The traffic impact analysis did not warrant a, a right turn lane to be installed at Cottonwood and Treacle. But I know that in discussing this with our public work staff, they are considering methods of getting the right turn lane constructed there, because eventually one will be needed. This project probably is not driving that need, but a community, there's going to be a community need for a right turn lane there eventually. So they are looking into some alternatives on that. Planning commission did have a split vote on this, five to one, and voted to recommend that city council approve the zone change from B-2 to PAD. So that concludes my presentation. I know the applicant is here in the audience and probably would like to just say a few words and answer your questions as well. Are we ready to ask questions yet, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Paul, what I'm wondering, there's no way in the world this is PAD, as you say. You've got no single-family lots, less than 6,000 every lot space. It's less than, less than seven, it has to be another one by 8,000, minimum 55-foot width. Required all single-family lots. Lots of space variety is required to encourage diversity in housing product types and neighborhoods. For every single-family lot or space less than 7,000 feet, an equal number of lots or spaces that are at least 8,000 feet in area should be provided. What, what I wanted to ask you is, we're, we're living in a different era. The PAD was developed back when they were building neighborhoods. And that kept that organized pretty well. Why can't we, if we have a product, have, have a zoning setup for clustered multifamily? And if that's going to happen in our town, it is supposedly something that is more affordable, from my understanding, and, and would, would give a place for people to go. And you, if you know me, you'd be real surprised I'm saying this, but I really, I think that we're in a new age where different things are happening and we need to adjust to them and, and be aware of them. And instead of putting them in, in an area they don't fit in, can't we just come up with a clustered, a clustered multifamily zoning requirement? It wouldn't be too, I mean, no bigger than most of these are going to be. You're not going to see these on 500 acres or something, I don't think. But on the smaller ones, it would be easy enough to do. And, and so instead of, instead of me having to vote no, because it's not a PAD, which, but if, if you could, I mean, if that's something that's going to be in our future, something that's good for Casa Grande, could the planning department look into coming up with some requirements for them and the next one that comes along, we'd know what to do? Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Powell, the short answer is yes. I, I agree with your position that, you know, these PAD design standards do not envision this housing product type. But the PAD's zone district is the best zone district we have today to kind to, to deal with these kinds of developments, right? There's really no other zone district that I can put them in, other than PAD. Now, when, when the PAD design standards were drafted in 2003, at least somebody had the foresight to say, hey, we think you're going to, might need some exceptions in the future, because you're going to have some unique product that we're not envisioning today. So they did provide for the authors of it, and I did not draft these, but the authors did envision that you might have to grant exceptions. I do think that we should create a, we should amend our zoning code, whether it's a PAD or another zone district, just for the build-to-rent housing type. I do think we should do that.
Yes.
But for now, this is the best alternative that I can offer.
Paul, isn't that kind of our plan, after we get the general plan approved, then to change some of our zoning?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's on my, it's on my work list.
And, and with the, with the new 2030 general plan, that will help us do that, correct?
It, it will. Yes, it will.
Okay. I know that was something we discussed, so. Yes, Matt?
First the Hawaiian shirt, and now this.
Go figure, man.
New man. But, but the thing that does it, Paul, is, is you're right, is that the letter C there, it is unique. And this is a product that, again, would never have been envisioned, but is what we need, what's needed, what everyone's going to now. So again, this is the affordable housing, this is what the part we can do as a city. We can't build the houses, but we can help zone for affordable workforce housing with- different sizes. I mean, there's not a lot of one bedrooms, I don't think, in town, and a lot of two and three bedrooms for rent. So, this is a good answer to a community problem that we're having.
Thank you, Matt. Jeff?
Paul, could you go back to the map of the development, please?
Yes, which, do you want the, the zoning map or you want a map of the layout?
The traffic map.
Okay, let me, the, the traffic map?
Yes.
Okay, not this one, you want the other one?
That, that one. Is there a plan for where school buses are going to pick up children? Because I, I don't see the buses picking them up on Treacle or Cottonwood. So, the buses are going to have to enter the development somewhere, am I correct?
Or Cottonwood, yeah.
Well, that, um, I would, yeah, I'm not that familiar with how school bus pickup works, but, uh, I would assume that, uh, they would have to stop somewhere, right?
Well, it looks awfully tight to me. And I know that's a concern that our transportation department has. Uh, so, I don't know, maybe the developer could answer that question?
Right, that's, that's a good point. Like I mentioned, the applicant is here and they could, when they come.
And we can, we can, when we open the public hearing, but if, that's a good question, we'll ask him that. Does anybody else have any questions to Paul, then? Matt?
I have, I have a real one this time, not making fun of Mr. Powell, but, um, the traffic, I, I saw all the discussion at Planning and Zoning, and where you look at this, the, the left out with the left in, and then the left out of Safeway, I mean, to me, and I'm not a traffic engineer and I, I read what they said, but I mean, I think we're, I'm just really concerned as, as a lot of other people were, you know, because that is a left-in, left-out on, on the north, or, it's not north and south, but on, on the east and the west, and then right-in. I mean, so you've got a lot of movements right there, not to mention that median, um, which is going to get clipped, I'm sure, more than once with people's tires. So, I mean, is, is that a legitimate concern, or are we just saying the traffic is, says it'll support it, so it'll support it?
So, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm going to.
But I know someone who is in the room.
I'm going to defer to our traffic engineer to answer that question. And who is, of course, with us tonight for that reason.
There was some debate when they, what's went to Planning and Zoning, I think, about the, uh, Cottonwood and, and Treacle, and right-in, right-out, or, you know, the afraid of people, as you were saying, going left, uh, into traffic. And, uh, and that one, that one part where it kind of comes over on Cottonwood, it, uh, they're afraid that somebody's going to take that and it's not really, uh, it could be dangerous. And, as you say, you've, you've got to have, uh, safety for the kids, and, uh, it, it would be real important to, uh, to have a bus, a bus area that could pick up, uh, young people.
Lisa, you had a question?
Yeah, just to kind of piggyback on this discussion, um, and of course, we have a business just to the south of this, so I, I understand the traffic on Cottonwood. So, when I saw the commission member with the concerns on Cottonwood, it brought, you know, that was brought to my attention because I see the traffic and how it's backed up so much. So, I understand that the, the analysis didn't count, or it didn't, um, justify for a turning lane on, um, Cottonwood, but I just worry about in the future if you have the Cottonwood Ranch multifamily, family, um, development coming in, that's where the traffic is going to get pretty bad. Because there's, there's certain times of the, as you know, and Dwayne knows, times of day where Cottonwood gets pretty backed up. And so, with this coming in with all those houses, you know, I mean, it might not justify now, but in the future for Cottonwood Ranch, um, really concerns me, so.
So, the good news, uh, councilperson, Fitzgibbons, is that there's adequate right of way there, are we believe, to put a turn lane if we needed to. Um, we, we're, we're, Public Works is actually looking very closely at that right now, right? To try to see if, because they agree with you that a turn lane on Cottonwood, uh, will be needed sooner versus later.
It's, it's needed now.
Yeah, it really is needed now.
Couple times during the day, at least, three, maybe three or four times during the day, it's needed.
And you know, one of my offices is right there behind Safeway, and I can tell you that it does get backed up on, on Cottonwood. Um, and I just wanted to echo, um, you know, Jeff's concern about, you know, where the school buses are going to go. And I also know that it's not necessarily the responsibility of, you know, the folks coming in for this development, but I do know that there's, um, a lot of activity for people that are walking in those cross-sections right there. So, it concerns me that I think that, as a city, we need to look at the crosswalk in that area, that if we're going to have this kind of development, that we need to put it in our plan, um, to make sure that our residents are safe crossing that way.
Good point, because you know they're going to walk across the street to Safeway.
And Strickland.
Bob, you had a comment or question?
Yeah, I, I, I want to emphasize, I really share, uh, Jeff's concern about the school buses. Um, I mean, this is essentially a, a big apartment complex, we're going to have families in there. And that big of a neighborhood, I, I would think probably justifies numerous bus stops. I, I don't, I don't know how far, uh, a child is required to walk, but the idea that they would stop on Treacle Road, I, I don't think is practical. The other thing, uh, that I have a concern about, um, from a public safety standpoint, is the, the limited, uh, entrance and exits. I think ideally, and, and I would think almost required, is, is a full-service entrance and exit, not, not just one with a limited exit, uh, only. I think you, you stand the, uh, of, a significant risk of having an incident, uh, there on Treacle Road, that you could shut down that, uh, entrance, uh, exit, and other than, people might be able to leave going to that north-end, um, exit, but you wouldn't be able to bring people in. Is that, is that accurate? That's the only way to get in.
That is accurate, yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I, I have a concern about that, but, um, right, right now, I guess we're just posing what we see as issues. I do like it, though, I mean, I don't want to.
All right, well, let's, let's open the floor, uh, open the floor to, uh, a public hearing, and maybe we can ask the applicant, uh, to come forward and give us her answer a couple of those. And, uh, one, I guess primarily, how big is that? Because it's difficult to tell on a map like this, if that's big enough for a bus, if a bus can pull in into the main entrance there and make a U-turn and come back out. I know it's designed, it's going to have some access for fire, so I know that a fire truck's got to be able to get around in there, and I'm sure they've already looked at this.
Yes, sir, that's true.
So, uh, and if a fire truck can turn around in there, a bus can turn around in there.
You stole my thunder, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
Good evening, my name is Mark Ready, um, I'm the applicant, uh, with RVI Planning and Landscape Architecture at, uh, one twenty South Ash Avenue in Tempe. Um, thank you for, um, allowing me to be here today and speak on this. Um, I thought, um, staff did a great job of the presentation. We actually brought one, but I don't think it's necessary to go through it unless you really want to see it. Um, it's a lot of the same information. We did, we do have some photographs of what the units look like on the interiors, if you're interested. I know we're focused mainly on the zoning case, not on the site planning, and so, I will touch on some of the items that you talked about, uh, for your information, but I just want to make sure I don't mix up what you're being asked today, uh, on the zoning case versus some of the more detailed site planning issues that we're talking about as well. Um, I did want to address, um, the first question from, um, Councilman Powell about the zoning. Um, what you've said about, um, PAD and the other zoning districts is, is spot-on. And we work with a client that's building, um, about twenty of these throughout the state of Arizona right now, and we're designing all of them, and we're in about twelve different communities. There's not a single community in the state of Arizona that has a zoning district that allows this by right without having to change anything, not a single one. So, the, the zoning districts that are, exist today in the state really never anticipated the uniqueness and innovation of this type of a product. I can tell you that the city of Goodyear is the first city that has formally adopted a new zoning code specific for this product. So, if you're looking at examples, you might want to look at what the city of Goodyear did. Um, they did some really good things. They did some things I'm not quite as excited about, but overall, they really thought about, and they had about four or five of these come into the city, and so, they learned a lot, and they were able to craft a code that really meets, um, the design intent of this product without requiring an applicant to do a PAD overlay to customize the standards. So, Casa Grande is not alone. In fact, you're just like every other city in the state of Arizona in this way. And as, uh, staff said, fortunately, your PAD does have exceptions in there that allow us to make rational modifications to apply for this until such time as you can d- design a zoning code that meets the requirements of this. So, I just wanted to say that you're not alone here on this. Let's see, the second thing I wanted to mention is the turning movements. Um, so, we are required, through the site planning process, to make sure that we meet the turning radius requirements for fire trucks, for trash trucks, and for large vehicles. And I, I, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think it's something like a fifty-foot outside radius and a thirty-five-foot inside radius, which is like a WB fifty design detail. The traffic engineer probably could, could help with that. But basically, it would accommodate for those large vehicles to come in. I have not been involved in a project like this where school buses are coming into the site. But having said that, they can, the, the turning radiuses and the design of this is such that they can fit, just like a large fire truck can fit into the site. And that's a requirement of the site planning process that we're going to be going through with the city as we get further, i- if we get the zoning approved today and we get to that point in the process. There was also a comment about, um, the number of school kids, and I also just wanted to say, from a demographic standpoint, while some children do live in these communities, there are not very many. Um, most of the demographics that we find in these communities, there's really three different types of demographics that comprise anywhere between eighty and ninety percent of the residents that live here. They are single, young professionals that are not ready to buy a home yet, but they want, they don't want to live in an apartment complex where they have people above them or below them, so they want to live in what feels like a single-family home. These are all detached, they have windows on all four sides, you don't have common walls, you don't have people above you or below you, so it really feels like a single-family home, but you have all of the amenities of a professionally managed rental community. You've got, uh, a, a luxury-style pool and spa and dog park, fire pits, playgrounds, all of the amenities and things that people want, but they have the lifestyle of living in what they feel is a single-family home. So, you've got this, the, the young people that don't have kids yet, you have the, um, the empty nesters that are looking to downsize. Um, and there's ironically, there's also a lot of divorced, uh, men and women who are moving into these communities, um, and not many of them have kids. There are some kids that live in the neighborhoods, but again, it's a very small amount. So, you're not going to have, with a hundred and seventy-six units, you're not going to have two hundred kids living in this community. You might have a dozen or, or something like that. And that's been proven through the demographic studies that the developers that are building these projects are looking at very closely because the types of amenities that they provide are based specifically on the users within those commi- in those facilities, and they find that kids just, they're just not that, uh, prominent in these neighborhoods. Having said that, that doesn't mean that there won't be some and that they don't need to get on buses, and so, I just wanted to go back to the idea that, um, buses and fire trucks and trash trucks can still circulate through here. There were also questions about traffic, and, um, I did bring our traffic engineer with me, Keith Winnie, um, with United Civil Group. He did the traffic study, um, for this project. And so, um, I can tell you from a very simplistic standpoint that the traffic study did look at all of the elements that were addressed at Planning Commission, the right turn lane on Cottonwood, the right turn lane into the site, um, the capacity analysis of the existing roadway system, e- existing and with full build-out of our project. And in all cases, we're meeting all of the criteria and warrants for acceptable levels of service, acceptable queuing lengths in the turn movements and so forth to accommodate for this project. So, if there are specific questions, Keith can certainly come up and, and answer those, and he would be much better to do that than myself, so I, I'd, I'd rather have him do that. Um, the last thing I wanted to mention, which, um, Councilman, you brought up, uh, Huddleston, about the, uh, single access into the community. So, basically, the way we design all of these communities is we have a primary access, which is our main entry, and that needs to be full, full turn movements. So, left's in, left's out, right's in, right's out. And this location meets that criteria, it's right across the street from the Safeway, there's a median break there, there's left turn lanes in and out, full turn movements, and we design the entry to be extra wide, so you can see there's a center median, and each lane is twenty to twenty-four feet wide. So, if there was an accident, say, on the inbound lane coming in, you could convert the outbound lane to a two-lane road temporarily, so cars could come in and out on one side of the median. The roads are wide enough to be able to accommodate that. In addition, you could convert the exit only in the emergency to a full movement if you wanted to. It's wide enough to accommodate full turn movements in, in an emergency situation or in a temporary situation where if, for some reason, one of those was blocked off, you could use it as full access. So, I just wanted to point that out because those are designed that way.
Thank you. Are, are the gated?
They are gated, but the gates are actually not at the main entry. It's kind of hard to see from the site plan. I actually brought a colored one, but when you come in, if you look, um, the, the way it's designed is that visitors can come into the community and they can park in front of the clubhouse. And then, on the left and the right, you'll see the gates. The gates are on either side, so you can come in, you can turn around, you can circulate through without having to go into the gates. And then, there's two sets of gates that are on either side of that entry. So, as you come in, if you're a resident, you come in, you turn, and then your card reader opens the gates, and then the pressure reader opens it when you're inside to come out, um, so that visitors don't have to, uh, go into the gates and, and access that way.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have, um, if I missed anything.
Did he answer your concern, Jeff, in terms of buses being able to pull in there? I mean, I still think that that's something, Paul, as we move forward on the project, you could at least involve the elementary school and have their traffic engineers or their people take a look at it, might, might give them more, a, a, a better feeling, if you will.
Ellen, I think, and I know you mentioned that in the other developments, no, not buses haven't gone in, but are they on these busy intersections? I mean, this is one of the busiest intersections in our community, so are all of your developments on busy intersections like this?
Most of them are, yes. Most of them are, well, all of them are on one arterial, some are on the corner of two arterials.
Okay.
Uh, but they're all on high, highly visible intersections and corners, which is one of the requirements that most of these developers have, is they want them to be in highly visible locations. I, I would expect if a bus was going to come in, they wouldn't go into the gates. They would come in and they would turn around, and there's enough room to turn around at that entry, so they wouldn't need to go through the community, they would just pull in and kind of turn around and pull out. And that's another reason we make those throats so wide. Those entries are about sixty feet wide, um, so it's almost the size of a collector road coming in, and it's a decorative design, so it looks really nice with a.
And I will, I will add that I have done a lot of research on this product, and I've actually gone, visited the product up in the valley, and most of them are young people with, with no kids.
That, that's correct, yeah. That's what we found.
What do you do for parking?
So, we provide, um, parking for every resident. Um, what's interesting about parking for this is that we've done enough of these that we know what kind of parking we need. Basically, what we know we need is we need one-point-one parking spaces per bedroom. So, we calculate that based on what we need, but we also look at what the city zoning codes require. And in most cases, the city zoning codes require a little bit less than what we know we need, so we provide a little bit of extra parking. So, right now, in Casa Grande, the city requirement would have us build three hundred parking spaces for this project. We're providing three hundred and fifty, because we know we need a little bit more than what the city requirement is. Every single resident gets a shaded parking space that's reserved specifically for them for their unit. So, we have one shaded space per unit, so there's a hundred and seventy-four, probably about a hundred and eighty, we have a few extra shaded parking spaces, and then we have, all of the rest of them are open parking that are just shared by everybody, so you can kind of park in whatever spots available closest to your unit. But every unit gets one designated shade space, uh, that's.
Outdoor parking, imagine?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Outdoor parking.
It's all outdoors, correct? It's, it's covered, covered, yeah, covered parking.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other questions? Matt?
On, on the bottom of this picture should be the east side of the development. It, there wouldn't be cross-access there, would there, to, to the, uh, multifamily?
No, there, there's actually a drainage channel that runs along that bottom edge that brings water from off-site through the project. So, you can see our backyards are about, I think it's twenty feet from the property line, and there's a drainage easement through there, uh, that carries off-site water flows through the site. So, there's no cross-access or anything between the properties.
What are those little, uh, they look like exits, but they're, they're cut, there's three of them on the east side that are kind of scribbled in?
That's what you were talking about, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, that one, yeah, I think those are drainages.
It could be trash can, trash collector.
I think they're drainages, right, right along the bottom of the picture.
Well, I didn't know if it was.
Oh, I'm sorry, those are dimensions. Those are, those are dimensions, um, just showing, I think, I think that's, I think that's what those are, let me just double-check.
I thought maybe they were. I thought maybe they were fire department gates or something.
No, no, sorry, those are just, it's just such a small site, those are just dimensions showing the spacing between the units.
Okay.
That's just open space.
What we, what we normally do is we connect the backyards together, and you can see every other unit, the backyards are connected, but we left the opposite ones open because we've got that open space in the back, so we wanted visual access in there, so it doesn't create this kind of blank wall where you've got solid walls on both sides. So, we have openings every other unit, so you can see in and out of that drainage easement. And you can also get back there for maintenance.
Lisa, did you have a question? I didn't mean to cut you off, no.
No. No, I, and I just, you know.
I doubt it, I'm sorry.
That's okay, and I, I don't want to, you know, harp on, and I think when we're looking at inside of this community, um, and you had mentioned you gave a really great explanation about other communities and, and who lives there. I think that what makes our community unique is we don't have things like this, and we don't have enough apartments, and we don't have enough of, you know, the, the smaller units. So, um, I think for, you know, as we move forward, I would feel better if we did have some designated area for, um, for the schoolchildren, because I think that we may find that we will have more young families here.
That's what I said, I think, Paul, as your, your team moves forward with this, just make sure, you know, working with the elementary school on, on their bus access, and if you would make sure that that happens.
Absolutely, no, it's a great point, and when we get to that site plan phase, we'll absolutely take a look at that and coordinate with staff.
And Dwayne, could we, could we ask you a question? I think somebody had asked a question about, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And had asked about traffic flow and what are your thoughts on traffic? I mean, because personally, I'm concerned about Cottonwood, I think it needs a turn lane. Now, I'm not because of this project per se, but it needs a turn lane anyway. Because I've been stuck in that signal many times. And then, your thoughts on the Trekkel left-in, left, you know, left-in, right-out, right-in, left-out, whatever?
Oh, so I'll talk about the right turn lane first, Mayor.
Okay.
We're looking at that. There are some issues with building a right turn lane there, but we're, we've, uh, found out how much it would cost to design it, and Allison Mills is giving us a estimate of what it would, how much it would cost to build one, so that's where we are right now. Now, as far as the traffic, the left-in, left-out, if you look at this picture, you think, boy, be a lot of traffic going in and out of this place. But these don't really generate a huge amount of traffic in the peak hour. I think it's, it's 80, somewhere around 80 vehicles in the, in the peak hour. So, it's not a huge amount of, of, uh, vehicles going out. In fact, our current standards, we wouldn't even require a traffic impact analysis for this because it, uh, generates less than 100 vehicles per hour, peak hour. But we did want more information, just for all the questions you've asked, we wanted to make sure everything worked right. And looking at their, their traffic statement, uh, I, I feel, I'm comfortable with them.
Okay.
Moving ahead with this.
All right. Does that answer everybody's questions?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Dwayne. All right, there's still a public hearing, so the floor is still open. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this, uh, L2? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and, uh, consider an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.133.1. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178, and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from general business to planned area development on approximately 16.4 acres of property generally located at the northeast corner of Cottonwood Lane and Trekkel Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.133.1 as presented.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
You know, we are, we had a lot of questions that weren't answered, we have a lot of, we haven't seen pictures of it, we haven't done a lot. I think it's premature to vote on this tonight, I really do. I'd like to have them come back and say, the schools have said you could do this, the traffic planning, and address the concerns we have, because this, this is carte blanche. You do this tonight, they do their project, doesn't turn out right, you don't like it, well. And, and as I say, I think there's a lot of work that could be done if we could table this for about two weeks to our next regular meeting, and, uh, and put it on the agenda for that with, with answers and, and, uh, the, some of the answers to the school buses and the traffic and all the other things. It's our responsibility, we need to be responsible for our community. And as, as you said, you sit right there on that corner, Lisa, and that is, it just filled with people. And, and so it, uh, we need, as I say, I think we need to get a better understanding on how this works or what it looks like. Uh, not against it, but I think it's premature tonight to, uh, to try to pass it.
Brett, don't we have a vote on the floor?
Yes, we do.
There's, we're already, we already had the motion and the second, and we are in the middle of the roll call vote. So, I'm trying to look it up, but my understanding is, is, one, I don't know if Mr. Powell's making the motion to table, but it is his turn to vote. I'm not sure that a motion to table is appropriate in the middle of a, a vote. Um, I don't believe it is, so I'll look at that, but currently, the, the order of the day is, it's Mr. Powell's turn to vote.
And we'll have a second reading on this.
There is, of course, you always have a second reading, and so, you know, that's a, another opportunity for you to consider the merits and whether you wish to pass this at all.
And if you vote no, it won't be on the consent agenda.
Well, I damn sure vote no. As far, the timing's wrong, and our information is not adequate to make these kind of decisions tonight. That's what bothers me.
Gloria, continue, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. So, that's our agenda tonight, we do have reports that are remaining. So, um, we'll start with reports first, and Mr. Powell, I'm going to start with you.
I can, I can, uh, report disappointment. Is that part of the thing you can report? Because I darn sure have some, and I, I feel sorry for our community on this vote tonight. But, to go on this, I shouldn't be talking about this, should I? Like that?
Because we're going to address this at a second reading, so discussion of the things that will be coming back is not.
Appropriate during reports.
Okay.
It's not agendized.
Okay, well, that, that is good, and, uh, I was going to say, I have a friend that, uh, made a comment about how bad Trekkel was. And, uh, I want to tell you what, if you get on at, at, uh, at Pinell, or not Pinell, on Florence Boulevard, and go all the way to McCartney, it's beautiful. It's been repaved, it's got stripes on it, I mean, it couldn't be any nicer. And, and that's what you hate to see in social media is, oh, they ought to do something about it, it's just so damn ugly, and, and get something finished on it. I mean, it is, it is a piece of work, and, and, uh, I think our Public Works Department really deserves a lot of pats on the back this year.
I agree with Mr. Powell. Matt?
Thanks. Got a couple of things, Mayor, you look good on the front page of the paper, standing in front of the governor, talking. That was nice. I still didn't make it above the fold, though. Well, baby steps. The next thing is, uh, I don't know how I can say this, Brett, but Trekkel Road bike lanes, there was a question to me if the bike lanes are still as wide as they were before, because they seemed narrower to somebody. And I admit, I haven't ridden my bike on it yet, I have ridden it on their, on the old ones, to be honest, but I don't know if they are the same size or what the standard bike lane is, and that was a concern that was addressed to me. Another concern, completely unrelated, is a stop sign at Overfield and Early has been knocked down, I've heard, for a while. I don't know if we can look at that. But on a happier note, downtown after dark this Friday, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM downtown, at various businesses and the patio, they're having music down there. So, that'll be fun, and backed by popular demand, we finally got our confirmation on Friday that on the 17th of April, even though the tax day has been moved, but we've been working so long with the 17th of April, the annual shredding day in the spring will be happening at First American Credit Union with the Casa Grande Youth Commission, sponsored by First American Credit Union at 1,001 North Pinell. And it's from 9:00 to 12:00, and we also got word today from Public Works that we'll be doing E-cycle as well. So, shredding E-cycle, um, second Saturday on the 17th of April, so it's coming up very quick. And we're getting the word out today, and a hint to the PIO, I haven't sent it to them yet, but, uh, we got that. And the credit union has some flyers out, and it's going out on the very social media channels tomorrow. So, come do that, bring your paper to shred, and ease to recycle, so electronics, thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Bob?
Yeah, again, applause for the, uh, Workforce Training Center, uh, opening dedication. I enjoyed, uh, reading about that, and I saw Larry Putt in his, uh, uh, letter or update to the council that he would see about getting a council tour, uh, out there, and, uh, I'd be excited to go on that. It looks like a neat place to see. Also, I wanted to thank everybody that, uh, participated in the Northwest area cleanup. Uh, I, I can't thank myself because I wasn't there, but I, I did see that a lot of people participated. And, um, I, I would like to, uh, at some point, approach the possibility of putting a roll-off container out in that general area. Seems like we end up handling the, uh, trash that is illegally dumped around the businesses there and in the desert. And, uh, I, I'd like to know what, what cost or what possibility there'd be of putting a roll-off that people could throw their trash in, so. That's it, Mayor.
Good man. Lisa?
Yeah, just also, the Workforce Training Center was so nice to see, it's something that, gosh, there was discussion how many years ago on this. So, it was so nice to see that it actually happened, and I went with the mayor and councilmember, oh, both of you guys, Herman and McBride, and so it was really nice to see. They had the robots out there that they have out there at the Lucid, um, and they were able to give a demonstration, everything, so it will be great to, to get a tour, it's really nice. And then, as far as the street ma, maintenance, I know Councilmember, um, Powell talked about that, and I just wanted to, you know, tell the public to be patient, you know, I mean, it takes time to get those roads, um, you know, fixed, and, you know, Cottonwood was kind of a mess today, but it's going to be beautiful in another day or so. So, um, I know I get, we get so impatient when we're behind one of those big old trucks, and, you know, people were so frustrated, I was one of them, but, um, but, but then when you think about it, you know, you think of, oh, my gosh, you know, what, how it's going to look in the end, so. But no, I'm also proud of our Public Works Department and us staying on that street maintenance program that we've done for so many years. So, um, I hope the public does enjoy that. And, um, thirdly, I don't know if anyone has gone out to that Hideout Steakhouse, but if you haven't, please go. It's, um, really good, and it's so exciting because so many people, I'm sure you guys have all gotten it. We need more restaurants, we need a steakhouse. And so, um, it was so great to go, and the food is really, really good. And then, of course, we approved the liquor license tonight, so it'll be nice for them to have that. But, you know, great, great steakhouse. And that's it for me.
Thanks, Lisa. Donna?
Uh, just a couple of things, on the, the cleanup Saturday, I wasn't at, uh, the mountain, but I was downtown. We were a small but mighty group, so hats off to Holly, um, for, for allowing us to help clean up. And it was really nice to be down that way. I had several people ask me if I was doing community service, and I said, kind of, um, so that was interesting. And then, um, also, kudos to the, uh, community services, because not only did they do that, but it was a full weekend for them, for their Easter celebrations, and, and I had one young, uh, family that told me that they were able to go to the Easter egg hunt at the library, and they felt it was safe and clean, and they just really enjoyed getting out. So, I think we have a lot to be proud of, so that's it.
Mr. Lavender?
This is the Travis Committee, although we're not having our annual dinner, we did select 43 students to receive scholarships this year. We're going to have a special event forum at the Neon Sign Park on April 23rd, blow out the red carpet, and just give them individually their certificate, medallions. Ralph continues to do a great job coordinating that committee, and also, kudos for the city. Uh, went over to the rec center last Wednesday with my mom, they get her second shot. It was, um, much better organized this time, so people really address some of the concerns. My daughter got her shot today, Dorothy Powell, very well organized there as well. So, appreciate the city providing these, uh, buildings to get our residents their shots so we can get to where we need to be.
Thank you. And really, uh, thank you to Sun Life, too, because Sun Life has really stepped it up and helped us with these vaccines, so I really appreciate them. We did, uh, Mayor's Roundtable actually last week, and we did a web, webinar questionnaire, live broadcast with Sun Life. They, they put up two of their employees to attend that roundtable and to act as, uh, experts for our, for the medical, from the medical perspective. We had the pharmacist there, and then we had the head of, of the practitioner, she was, uh, kind of like their head medical person. So, uh, they were able to answer questions that the pub, that our public had, and I think it was well-attended. We had over, almost 100 people, uh, uh, live on the broadcast, and I think we've had several hundred since, watch it, you know, remotely or secondarily. So, we're going to do another one of those on, it's not going to be on vaccinations, but, help me out, Larry, when is it? It's, uh, April 14th at 6:00 o'clock will be the next one, it's the Mayor's Town Hall on the city's general plan. So, that'll be the next one. And last week, I had the, I had the pleasure to go see our new emergency room at the Banner Medical Hospital, and, and hopefully, we can get the, uh, city council a, a tour of the new, uh, facility. It's 23 rooms now, and they're going to, they're going to close the old side, which is another 23 rooms. So, they've doubled the size of the emergency room, but they'll close the old side and remodel it. And so, I believe the new side is now open, if not, it opens this week. And so, um, they'll actually have a real entrance now for the emergency room. Uh, they, they had one before, but they closed it, and literally, they were doing triage in the hallway for the emergency room. So, but, uh, Brian Keller and his team have done a phenomenal job over there, and they really, really are improving medical care for our community. And, and I, my hat's off to Casa Grande Banner, they're, they're doing a really good job, and I think Brian's really stepped it up over there for us. Yeah, and, and, uh, thanks to the governor for, for coming last week and helping us do a, they, they didn't, they changed it not from a ribbon-cutting, because, so we didn't cut a ribbon, but, uh, it was good to have Lucid there as well, and the governor was there, and, um, so, and, and I got a chance to speak, so that was, that was nice. And, and really thank all of our partners and the collaboration that, that really went on between CAC, the county, the city, uh, and Lucid, uh, to really put that project to, together. Literally, they built that thing in like five months, that, that new training facility was built in five months. People say, well, but it's all kind of wood on the inside. Yeah, but it's industrial. It looks, it looks industrial, especially when you have these big robots inside, inside cages in there. So, it's pretty cool. If you, if you get a chance to go see it, I would highly recommend it. And then, I was at the South Mountain, or at the CG Mountain Cleanup, and so, in fact, I saw Larry there and, and Mr. Weaver there, and, uh, a couple of our compliance officers, the police department was there, so we had over 100 people there. It was really great to see, uh, we cleaned up a ton of trash. And, um, it's, it's such a, we have such a gem there with that, with our CG Mountain Trails. It's really a shame to see the, the four-by-fours kind of tearing it up. They, they cut the barbed wire, they move our barricade, and we stick big giant telephone poles out there and they just move them. And so, um, I think, Mr.
Frustrating, yeah.
Yeah, it's very frustrating. Mr. Hardesty's working up a plan that probably will, he'll, in fact, I know, he'll bring it to council on a study session on, on what his recommendations are. He's working with Fish and Games, so Fish and Games got some ideas, so it's, it's a really kind of a collaborative effort of all, a lot of our agencies, the Sheriff's Department, Fish and Game, the city. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to see what, what he brings forward and how we can maybe help manage that area a little better. We are moving forward with, uh, putting together some information, I'll call them PSAs for our general plan update to educate people on when it is, when they should expect to. receive their ballots, and to make sure that they do vote, and that they know the facts on, on the general plan. So encouraging them to go to our, you know, website, take a look at the plan, understand it, and then make sure they vote, because it is their plan. And so, anyway, I've got a meeting with Supervisor McClure. He's interested in coming to Casa Grande to see how we partner with the Boys and Girls Club. So we're going to go out and tour a couple of the facilities, including our rec center. And he wants to also see the, the teen center and how the teen center is operated. So I give him credit for, for looking into it and coming to visit us. So that's probably enough for now. I already talked about the roundtable. There's voter registration. We had one today, actually. It was at the library. And the next one is April 19th. So there, we are helping the county, these are, this is a county-run voter registration program. They have a mobile unit, and they bring it over and they park it in our, in, you know, front of our library. And again, you want to mark your calendars, the next date is April 19th. And it's usually from like 9:00 to 4:00, or something like that. And our library got tagged this weekend, right over the new entrance. And it really is depressing that somebody would deface it. I'm talking, it's, it's about a five-foot-tall tag. It's not a little tag. And somebody had to stand on top of those railings, those, those like, the arbor that we put over the entrance, had to stand up there, big red can of paint. I know the police department will figure it out. So if you see anybody or know anything, please let us know.
Well, that could be one of the first things that our drones do when they get out.
Maybe, Mr. Powell, maybe. All right, anybody else have anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. And tonight's city council meeting is adjourned.